So, the City of San Juan Batista, regular city council meeting of Tuesday, November 17th, 2020 is now in session. Pledge of allegiance. Vice Mayor Jordan.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call.
Mayor Edge.
Here.
Vice Mayor Jordan.
Here.
Councilmember De Vries.
Bless you.
Thank you.
Councilmember De Vries.
He's probably going to be late.
No, he's here.
Yeah, he's here.
Is he here? Oh, there he is, right there.
Dan, say hello.
Go on to the next one.
Councilmember Flores.
David, what's happening?
Uh, no, hold on.
Would you call Dan's name again?
So you're at the Tahoe or North Star or something?
I'm not.
We're having roll call. We are, can you guys hear me?
Can you mute them?
Your family's where?
Dan, Dan De Vries, we are having roll call.
Councilmember De Vries.
Oh, uh, hold on. I can turn it off.
Okay. So where's your cabin? It's in Truckee.
Can you hear me? Can, can I be heard?
That looks beautiful.
Councilman De Vries, we are doing roll call. And we're calling your name.
Okay. Sorry.
Do you need to unmute him?
Well, I asked him to unmute.
Can you unmute him so that he can respond?
Darlene S. Boy at gmail dot com. It's got three attachments. It's been set twice.
Go on to the next council member.
So I think he's muted.
Councilmember Flores.
Can they hear us? Can, can you guys hear us out there, anybody? Can anyone out there hear us? No. Not getting any response. Okay.
Yes, you missed it. Can you hear?
Can you hear us, Dan?
Can you hear us, Dan?
Oh, wait a minute. That might help.
Can you hear us?
Okay.
Councilmember De Vries.
I'm here.
Councilmember Flores. Councilmember Freeman. A forum is present.
Thank you, Laura. So now we go on to public comment. Anybody from the, the public can make a comment. Anything that is not on the agenda. You have three minutes.
Hello.
Yes, hello.
I got a comment.
Okay.
This is in the address on 1026 First Street. I got a comment.
Okay, thank you.
If you're willing to listen.
Thank you, go ahead.
We can hear you.
Okay. Yeah, I, this morning, uh, not this morning, today, I'd like to remind everybody in the city council and city hall about the traffic on First Street. Traffic on First Street, there's a lot of speeding going on and not stopping at stop signs. I'm wondering what is the city going to do about this? Uh, on a record basis, I've called the sheriff multiple times. Uh, I, I brought it up to the city before. And, uh, it doesn't seem like it's getting any better. And traffic is continuing to get worse as far as that goes. So we're seeing more traffic. More people are walking up and down the streets than ever before. And it's getting really unsafe out there. And the more people I talk within the neighborhood, the feeling is generally the same. Traffic, there's a lot of speedsters going through on First Street. This is going to Monterey and out towards the city limits. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Anyone else?
Can I ask, can I ask a follow-up question about that right there? So David, are you talking about between the barricade and?
Um, uh, Dan, Dan, we're not, we're not going to discuss anything. This is just public, public comment. We need to know if there's anybody else with public comment.
Mary, I'm entitled to ask a follow-up question, am I not? Deborah Mall?
Sure.
Thank you. David, are you talking about traffic between the barricade and the wall to the bonfire lot? Like in front of the community center or?
No, no, First, uh, First Street between Monterey Street and out towards, uh, Hawaime.
Which is the entrance to Creek Ridge?
That's the main entrance to San Juan Batista from, uh, the new homes that are built out there. I understand the city name, it goes out further beyond the stop sign, which is on Hawaime and First Street. Okay, so between, you got both ways traffic. There's, there's a lot of speeding going on in there, uh, running stop signs. Like I said, I've called the sheriff multiple times and it doesn't seem to get any better. It just seems to be getting worse.
Okay, thank you.
Just like to bring it up and, just like to bring it up and hopefully something can be done about it. Thank you.
Thank you, David. I just wanted to understand what area you're talking about. Thank you very much.
Yeah, one of the, one of the things too, I see that there's a one-way street on Toolume, between Toolume intersection and Monterey Street. That's a one-way street and there's a barrier to prevent, uh, traffic to go against traffic there. And I see a lot of people going through that barrier, beyond that barrier, going the wrong way on that one-way street too, on First Street. So it's just, uh, it just seems like a lot of people trying to get, get out of town through First Street. And there's very little patience going through there as far as traffic is concerned. Thank you.
Thank you for bringing that to the attention of the city, David. We appreciate it.
Thank you, David. Anyone else? Do we have any other comments? Can you tell? Can you see?
I can go here. And I see no hands raised, Mayor.
Okay. Okay, so if we have no more public comment, we'll go on to, um, item three, the consent items. All matters listed under the consent agenda may be enacted by one motion authorizing actions indicated for those items so designated. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless requested by a member of the city council, a staff member, or a citizen. So is everybody okay with the consent items?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve all matters listed under the consent agenda that they may be enacted under one motion authorizing the actions indicated for those items so designated.
Do I have a second?
I check. Yes, five seconds.
Thank you.
Oh, I should put the interactive people on. I forgot to put you guys on the screen.
We have a roll call, uh, well.
Councilmember De Vries.
Yes.
Councilmember Flores.
Yes.
Councilmember Freeman.
Yes.
Councilmember Jordan.
Yes.
Mayor Edge.
Yes.
All members of the council being present, the motion as stated by the mayor passed unanimously.
Thank you. So we'll go on to item four, presentations, informal items and reports. Item A, proclamation for Small Business Saturday, November 28th in San Juan Batista. So I have a proclamation here that I'm going to read. The proclamation is Small Business Saturday. Whereas the City of San Juan Batista celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community. According to the Small Business Administration, there are 31.7 million small businesses in the United States, representing 99.9% of all firms with paid employees in the United States. And whereas small businesses employ 41.1% of the employees in the private sector in the United States, 62% of the U.S., small businesses report they need to see consumer spending return be pre-COVID levels by the end of 2020 in order to stay in business. 65% of U.S. small businesses, small business owners say it would be most helpful to their businesses to have their regulars return and start making purchases again. And whereas 96% of consumers who shopped in Small Business Saturdays agree that shopping at small, independently owned businesses supports their commitment and agrees small businesses are essential to their community. Whereas the City of San Juan Batista supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our community. And whereas the impacts of the pandemic have emphasized the extra importance of the need to support local businesses and the significance of shopping locally to support our local economy. Now therefore, the City of San Juan Batista does hereby proclaim Saturday, November 28th, 2020, as San Juan Batista Small Business Saturday, and urge the residents of our community to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year. Um, do we have somebody that would like to say something?
Bev, is Bev here?
Bev is here.
I was waiting for her to. Okay, go ahead.
Hi, the, I'm Jill Padran, San Juan Community Business Association. And we wanted to recognize our small businesses for the importance that they play in our economy and our community. And to thank the City of San Juan Batista for this, for proclaiming November 28th as Small Business Saturday. As everybody knows, we are, um, using, having extended hours, um, every Saturday through the, of Christmas. So get out and visit the local shops. Thank you.
Thank you, Jill. Anyone else? Okay. And so we're going to make sure that, um, our, uh, city clerk gets this to, to the, uh, community, the Business Community Association. So, okay. So we'll go on to item 4B, monthly financial statements.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the city council, our report, uh, this go-around in November reflects a 25% progress into our fiscal year. It shows that on the revenue side, we were doing better than we estimated on the gas tax fund, which is surprising. And that really is great because we're looking for some change to implement our pavement management program. So I promise we would relook at that in January at mid-year. And so hopefully there'll be ample funds there to implement the three or four projects we've been hoping for. On the expense side, uh, most of our expenditures are less than 25%. In total, we're at 15% on the expense side. A few of them are higher than, than, than expected just because of the trend. The capital projects fund is high with, uh, with Third Street construction just concluding. So that will taper off as our, as our capital improvement slows down. The rest of it is, is pretty much in line. If there are any questions, I'm happy to respond to them.
Councilman Freeman, do you have any questions?
Not at present time, no. Thank you, though.
Councilman De Vries, do you have any questions?
Yeah.
Councilman Flores.
No questions.
Okay. Vice Mayor Jordan, I do not, thank you. Okay. I don't have any questions. So we can go on. We go on to, uh, item 4C, city, city manager's report.
I'll have to share with the council and, and the public, um, what's in this agenda today is pretty much my status report. I've been focused on water and we're going to be talking about our water at the end, towards the end of the, the conversation today. Thank you for adopting the, the master plans. That was, uh, a quiet but terrific step to take. We had accepted them previously, but now they're coming back in their final form and they've been adopted. So thank you for that. We have several projects going on in town and I've been providing the council with status reports on our community development projects. I guess, uh, the, the biggest one that people ask about most often is the roundabout. That would hopefully slow traffic down on First Street, uh, coming into town. That is now at the 100% design, which is great. We're just coordinating with the adjacent property owner to make sure that, that the, the right-of-way and, and their drawings and, and utilities are all established before they go out to bid. So we hope to be starting construction on the new roundabout on First Street soon. We have begun construction on the sewer line and lift station out on San Juan Hollister Road. So those projects are moving forward. Those were approved last month by the city council. So with that, um, the rest of the, uh, the pertinent details are here. Uh, the budget has been a big focus and, and water. So both of those are coming forward to you tonight in this agenda. With that, if anyone has any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Vice Mayor Jordan, do you have any questions?
The roundabout, we don't, it's, so all of the design work is completed? We don't have a date yet on when we can actually put a shovel in the ground?
No, the, uh, the challenge right now is, is coordinating with the adjacent property owner on the east side of the roundabout, the east side of First Street. So we have shared the plans with their engineer and they are working to incorporate that into their subdivision. And, uh, they had to wait for the design to be finished. I wouldn't be surprised if Meritage was seeking, uh, uh, bids right now for the work.
Oh, nice, okay.
Yeah, depending on the weather, of course.
Right.
Might be raining by the end of this council meeting.
Sure, right? And this will help alleviate, hopefully, some of the issues that David's been on.
Exactly, yeah. I hope it helps.
So, uh, Councilman De Vries, do you have any questions, comments?
Yes, I do, thank you. Uh, Don, is this roundabout in front of Rancho Vista going to cost the city anything?
No. No, it's a condition of approval.
I, I know that, but so have a lot of things. So this is, this is not going to cost us, the city, anything, Rancho Vista's roundabout?
No.
Great. And the second question is subdivision on the east side. What subdivision? Do we know the subdivision going in there?
Yes, it's a private, small subdivision of six lots, being subdivided by the Loezza family.
Is there an application into the city for that already?
Oh, for some.
And if so, then what's its status?
For some time. Uh, they're trying to get from tentative track map to a parcel map.
So that's already been, uh, reviewed by the legislature?
That was reviewed in, uh, June 19, 2019.
Okay, thank you.
Uh-huh.
Councilman Flores, do you have any comments or questions?
No comments. One question.
Okay. Councilman Freeman.
I just want to follow up on what Dan said and I'm really looking forward to this. It's been a long time coming. It's been discussed for the last, at least, three years. And I, I too, am really hopeful that it will help slow down the traffic on First Street.
Great, okay.
And I'd like to say that it'll hopefully prevent the trucks from coming.
Yes, yes, that would be awesome.
Oh, yeah, the trucks. Thank you for that, Mayor.
What could I forget?
Yeah, just the ones on Monterey Street, though.
So now we'll go on to, um, item 4D, reports from city council appointees to regional organizations and committees. Vice Mayor Jordan, would you like to go first?
Thank you. I have nothing we have not met.
Okay, all right. So, uh, Councilman Flores, would you like to, uh, report anything?
Uh, yes, I've been attending some webinars and, uh, different things. I attended a webinar on Laquino Cities, 2020 election analysis, what happened there. And I attended a, a virtual conference on water. It's, uh, look out, it's, uh, water, uh, education for Latino leaders. And Latino leaders, they don't have to be Latinos, as long as they serve Latinos, they're Latino leaders. So I also attended a, attended a coffee chat with Caballero. She gives an update on the status of what's happening within the government and how things are happening over there. And there was no afterthought. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Freeman.
Yes, so, um, I also attended several meetings, one with Jimmy Panetta about, uh, three weeks ago, uh, with several other people. I mean, all virtual, of course. He, he was from his house in Cornell, by the way. Um, anyway, so that went well. Um, I also, um, have attended, um, Monterey Bay Community Power, now called Central Coast Community Energy. And, uh, we did, uh, adopt in the city of Fulton. And so that's, I believe in Santa Barbara County, if people can correct me if we're wrong. Anyway, we've been, we've been a part of the group now and I'm good. And I'm, I'm having an airbag meeting and Friday morning I have a super cog with, uh, transportation planning for, for Santa Barbara, SLO, San Benito, Monterey, and Santa Cruz County. Lots of big.
Thank you. And I haven't had a meeting this week, so I'm, my meetings are Thursday and, and the, uh, the three A, they, they've suspended our meeting until next month, so.
And Dan?
Oh, sorry. Councilman De Vries, do you have anything to, uh, report on? Councilman De Vries?
Sorry, I was on mute. Uh, I'm not on the committees, uh, but I do have an advisory note that I was going to make as regards the Caltrans presentation to COG on Thursday night, but I'll allow the COG representative to make that rather than me.
That's you.
That's me. I'm not going to report on it. Because I don't remember what it was.
Okay.
Sorry, would you like to report on it?
Sure, I'd be happy to. So Caltrans District 5 on Thursday night, Thursday evening, is going to make a presentation to San Benito COG regarding the, what they call the Economic Business Plan for the Highway 101 corridor. And leveraging what they refer to as one of California's greatest assets, which is the Highway 101 corridor. And they're going to present that to COG on Thursday evening via Zoom. And the information is on the COG website and I think it's going to be a great presentation.
Thank you, Dan. Okay. So now we go on to item five, public hearings. A, consider approval of solid waste collection rates effective January 1st, 2021, to June 30th, 2021.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the city council, um, we had postponed this item. Uh, it usually occurs, uh, at the first of the fiscal year. And we negotiated, uh, with the other agencies, the City of Hollister and the county, on how to best implement this and, and came to an agreement with them and, and amongst the city council here that we would consider new rates beginning January 1st. So Kathleen Gallagher is here from the Integrated Solid Waste Management Group. And she's here to present a quick report on, uh, on the annual increase to the recology rates that we are looking at. Kathleen, would you like to share with us?
Your will. Don, can you give me?
Yes.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mary, councilmembers. Thank you for considering this item again. It's consideration of adoption of a resolution approving the waste collection rates. As Don said, that will go effective January 1st, 2021, through June 30th of 2021. You might recall that we brought this to your city council in April as well as in June to consider this rate increase. But the council directed us staff, um, including Don Reynolds and the other regional agency senior staff, you know, the way Espinoza, then Harry Barro, Jenny, the, or the rain director and Barbara Thompson, County Council, to meet with Recology's general manager, Phil Coucher, and Colonel, and Recology Controller, to discuss methods for us to defer the rate increase, um, due to the impacts to our residents and businesses related to COVID. Certainly every dollar matters. And so, um, Recology came back with a number of options. As you might recall, we came to your city council in October, it's one is regarding, uh, a six-month term of this grant and we established, uh, what's called a balancing account, which allows us to defer that rate increase for six months. When the council approved the first amendment to our franchise agreement to allow that balance in the county. So therefore, um, the item for the council tonight is the result of all of this discussion and basically to, um, request, uh, city council approval of this rate increase that will go effective January 1st of 2021 through June 30th of 2021. Very quickly, um, just to have it, please, feel so unknown. The rate increase is a 4.5% increase. It is, um, approved as part of the methodology in, uh, franchise agreement that we have with Recology that commenced in November of 2018. For most of our San Juan residents, we'll see, and when I say most, it's approximately 74% of our residents, will see a $1.45 increase. That's what this rate will look like for most of our residents with a 32 gallon container. Um, so I wanted to just provide that information to your staff report, um, also in the notice of public hearing and, um, additional detail in the resolution. But I just wanted to be clear on what this rate would look like. And then my final statement and happy to answer questions. Phil Coucher is also on the line from, uh, from Recology. You might recall that the franchise agreement, as I stated, commenced in November. It is a 10-year agreement. The prior agreement for this, um, substandard, uh, because it was not allowing San Juan and our other regional agency members basically to speak the waste production mandates that have been aggressive, um, starting with AB 939 and 1989, and then most currently to SB 1383, where the regulations were approved. And it's particularly a focus on organics diversion. What I mean by organic is yard waste, food waste, wood waste, et cetera. It's a, it's a significant concern by the state because it, uh, it is, it creates a significant harm that may in the landfill. So this is one of the reasons why the new programs in the franchise agreement for San Juan residents and businesses include organics diversion. So sorry for the long detail on there, but I did want to provide, um, information is, uh, that is what's, uh, this rate increase was about and to provide more context. I'm happy to answer any questions, um, as well as Phil Coucher, the general manager of Recology.
Okay.
So, um, Councilman Freeman, do you have any questions?
No, but I, I do have to comment. I, um, in spite of the fact of the, the rate increase, I, I, I do feel that the Recology is doing a, a pretty good job on the organics diversion and that is important. But I'd like to add one huge improvement that, that they could possibly make to their operating. Additional monies available to help them with that. Uh, as you know, um, the world is, uh, hopefully quickly electrifying its transportation fleet and one of the things that can be electrified very easily is garbage trucks. They have three huge disadvantages right now as a diesel. They're smelly, they're big, they're ugly, and they don't move very fast. And, um, electric motors are great cars that only go 10 feet and stop, then 10 feet and stop, and then 10 feet and stop. But they're much quieter and they don't have the diesel smell. You're still going to have the smell of the garbage. Now, there is money available in forms of grant and other forms of advantages from airport control. So I would suggest that Kathleen and Mr. Recology get together and think about that. Your operational cost on an electric vehicle is two-thirds less than a diesel. So just think about that savings over the long run.
This is Phil Cuchet, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yeah. Councilman Freeman, Recology is experimenting right now in a high basis with a number of electric vehicles. We have some operational in San Francisco, and they have several operational in Seattle. So we are exploring that possibility, and they do continue to evolve. There are some shortcomings, as you mentioned, but they are evolving.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Freeman. I will circle back regarding the grants. I'd like to ensure that we're taking advantage of whatever we can on electricity. So thank you for that.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Flores, do you have any questions or comment?
No comment, no questions.
Okay, thank you. Councilman DeVries, comment or question?
Yeah, thank you.
Vice Mayor Jordan?
Nothing, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So we'll go on. Let me see. So do we approve this?
Well, we read the results.
It's not an action item.
Public comment?
Public comment.
Public comment. I need public comment. Does anybody have a public comment? Anybody from the comment have a comment, question?
I don't see any hands raised, Mayor.
There's a little red thingy there. Oh, that's you. Okay, all right. So now.
In this case, we have to recognize whether or not we have any protests. Is that correct? It's the property.
I was not supplied with that number, but yes, you're supposed to report how many protests were received. We're looking for 50% plus one.
Right. And Kathleen, did Trish share with you the number of protests?
Yes, she did. She was great. She shared with me that we have received 16 protests. Protest per 18, excuse me, 2 in 18 is the 50% plus one. It would need 287 protests to have a 50% plus one. We have 16, so well below the majority protest needed.
Okay. So do we approve this now, or do we?
Yeah, I think you're looking for a motion.
So now we need to have a motion to approve the, for the approval of the general plan amendment. Do I have a motion?
This is the Recology.
I'll make a motion for the approval of the solid waste collection rates effective January 2021 to June 30, 2021.
Okay. Do I have a second?
One second.
Thank you.
Let John do it. It's all right.
Hey, we both did it same time, Seater.
That's right, that's right, you got it. Let's have it.
Okay. Thank you.
Roll call vote.
So now we have a roll call vote.
Councilmember DeVries?
Yes.
Councilmember Flores?
Yes.
Councilmember Freeman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
Mayor Edge?
Yes.
All members of the council being present, the motion as stated by the maker passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathleen.
Thank you, Kathleen. Thank you for your presentation and your explanations. They're very good. So now we go on to item 5B. Consider approval of a general plan amendment to change the land use designation from public facilities to industrial and zoning map amendment to change the land use zoning from public facilities to industrial of former city well site located at the corner of Mission Vineyard Road and Old San Juan and Hollister Road. Assessor's parcel number 002-550-007.
Mayor, members of the City Council, David Mack is with us tonight to present this project. And then I just have a few comments to add when David is done with his presentation.
Great, thank you, Don. Everybody can hear me correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Great. So this is the Coke Rezone, and I'll start out once I get this going, hold on. The project site itself is located at the corner of Mission Vineyard Road and Old San Juan Hollister Road, and we'll have a map that shows that. APN is 02-55007. And the current zoning is public facilities, which is the reason for the request. The project involves a general plan amendment to change the land use designation from public facilities to industrial and a zoning map amendment to change the zoning designation from public facilities to industrial as well. In San Juan Batista, the general plan land use designation and zoning map currently mimic each other, so while it seems redundant, both of them have to be changed. A little background on why this project is required. In August of 2018, the city took and approved a land swap agreement with Dale Koch, coming into compliance with a compliance order for the water quality that the city wells were producing. As part of that agreement, the city took a number of actions, as did Mr. Koch, but the actions were to purchase well six. Oops. The well six site was previously owned by Dale Koch, and the city owned well three. The city also purchased the underlying 0.73 acres of land from the Kochs, and they granted five water and sewer connections for use on the well three property that Mr. Koch would be receiving and one adjacent parcel. Put all the parcels together for 11.77 acres. So about one water and sewer connection for about one, excuse me, for about two acres per connection.
Hey, David, can I add to that number four? The city agreed to subdivide the property forever.
Okay. I didn't see that in the agreement, but okay, we'll add that in. And on the Kochs' action, they purchased or acquired an equal 0.73 acre piece of land and purchased the well three. So in essence, it was a land swap with the city receiving well six from Mr. Koch, and Mr. Koch receiving the prior well three lot from the city. Additionally, there was a lot line adjustment done on the well three parcel to allow the city to retain the sewer lift station and that lot line adjustment portioned off about 0.3 acres of land to make a land swap an equal amount of acres. So this, hopefully you can see the cursor, is the well eight lot that Mr. Koch acquired from the city. And in that upper right-hand corner is the existing land use designation as public facility. The entire parcel is blue. It will become purple with the exception that small area where the sewer lift station remains. So Mr. Koch received this area, the city retained this public facilities area. So that's the land use designation map change from public facilities to industrial. And as I mentioned, this is being done because Mr. Koch cannot use a piece of land that has owned public facilities. His previous piece of land was owned industrial, and with the swap, there was an understanding that he would retain the same usage on the new properties. So public facilities to industrial. This map looks exactly the same, but this is the zoning map again from public facilities to industrial, existing zoning to the new zoning. The project or land swap can be considered exempt from CECL, Section 15061b3, which is known as the common sense exception, which basically states that if there are no, it's CECL but exempt from additional environmental review, if a common sense mind can understand that there would be no impact. In this case, the project's involved an equal exchange of land, and the rezoning and land exchange will not result in any net increase of industrially zoned property. And the reason that I say that, hopefully you can see this yellow highlight, is the rezone of the city well six, the other end of the swap, is connected for a December 1st, 2020 Planning Commission decision to change that use designation and zoning from industrial back to public facilities to allow the city, the new city well to function correctly. So with that, I'm trying to keep it short. Staff does recommend the city council follow the planning commission recognition and adopt resolutions to change the land use designation of the Koch property from public facilities to industrial and a separate resolution to change the zoning designation of the Koch property from public facilities to industrial. Okay, I will answer any questions the city council should have. Thank you for my presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you, David, very good.
If I could just add one thing, Mayor. We talked about paying the development fees with Mr. Koch, and he was taken back. He didn't think that the intent of the agreement to swap properties meant that he should have to pay for the rezone of his property. And it's my impression that the city manager does not have the authority to waive fees, so with the council's concurrence, we would add that to the resolution. David has spent about $3,515 on this process, and those would be the fees that any private developer would pay to accomplish a rezone. So I just wanted to ask the council if they wanted to consider waiving these fees. It makes sense to me. It's consistent with the agreement. So I just wanted to point that out. Everything David has said about the intent of the agreement was to give Mr. Koch an industrially zoned piece of land. So I just wanted to point out to the council that we've spent about $3,500 in fees, and that we would add that to the resolution as the council agrees to waive the planning fees. So with that, thank you, David. I'm done.
Thank you, David, thank you, Don. Vice Mayor?
I guess if I could, the only, sorry, Mayor, the only thing I'll add, just for the record, is the planning commission did consider this on November 1st, and they recommended the city council approve the project.
Right, thank you.
Okay, so they already approved it?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
While they didn't approve it, they recommended approval to the city council. Because it's a general plan and zoning change, the city council is the final approving body.
Okay. I don't quite understand it, though. If the city, if the planning commission didn't approve it at their last meeting, they?
They weren't asked to approve, Mayor. They were only asked to recommend to the city council for approval, right? So they did agree.
So then if we agree, we approve it, then the planning commission doesn't have to approve it?
As David said, the city council is the last word in this one.
All right, okay, all right. So Vice Mayor Jordan, do you have any questions?
I just have a question. David, can you go back a couple of slides where it talks about the connections? One more, one more.
One more.
One more?
One more?
That's it.
I think the connection is right here.
There you go.
There it is.
So part of this is that we are granting five water connections and five sewer connections. We're handing those over as well?
Yes, yes, which is part of the reason we need to extend that sewer line.
Copy that. Thank you.
Actually, those, the granting of those connections, I pulled up, was actually already part of the.
Agreement.
Best public agreement that was approved by the city council in August of 2018.
Understood.
Okay, thank you. All right, thank you.
Yeah, I think we're good, David.
Yeah, we're good.
Thank you. Councilman DeVries, do you have any questions or comments?
Yes, I, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, yes, I did. Just a comment. As regards paying the fees, I'm looking at paragraph 10 of the agreement entitled Lot Line Adjustment. The city shall bear responsibility for preparation and payment for all necessary planning entitlements and documents and pay all fees for the creation of a separate parcel for the well six property. And I know I voted no on this at the time with city manager in the board. I know I voted no on this at the time that Aaron's manager, Lutwies, God love him. But I just have to reiterate a point as I leave that I, in my, in my view, this is one of the worst agreements that the city of San Juan Batista has ever entered into. But I can agree, a contract's a contract. And Don's right, paragraph 10 says play this day, the city shall pay all fees.
Thank you, Dan. Then we don't need to add it to the resolution. The authority's already been granted.
But again, it's not worth happiness that I say that, Don. I voted no a couple of times, and I'm just beside myself that the city got itself into this predicament, this well order. It's the worst deal ever.
Can you ask the Councilman DeVries to mention this is the bad well?
Yeah, I didn't, yeah. Includes entitlement.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman DeVries. Councilman Freeman, do you have anything to say? Any questions?
Yes, I'd like, Councilman DeVries, I have some comments. The whole thing started with the fact that well three producing water with extremely high nitrates. We had a brake order from the Department of Public Health. So this bad contract, this bad purchase agreement was forced because we have riposte in the city of San Juan Batista. And that situation continued on and off for well over two and a half years. So it wasn't a small thing. And as a side note, well six, the well we purchased or swapped with Mr. Koch is now having increasing nitrate. So Dan's bad deal is looking even worse.
Thank you. Councilman Flores, do you have anything to say? Councilman Flores? You're muted.
No, no comment.
No question, no comment?
Pondering.
Okay, all right. I just, okay, thank you. I just think it's unfortunate that we ended up with a well that doesn't even service us anymore, so. But it's an agreement.
Right, right.
So do we vote on this now? Or public comment?
Excuse me, to those of you here in the chamber, we can't allow the first speaker, but I'll.
Oh, no.
Can you take your mask off when you talk?
I think that would be helpful.
Mayor?
Is it just me? I've got two speakers now, okay. All right, so do we have any public comment?
That's much better, by the way.
Thank you, okay. Sorry about that, I didn't know. Any public comment?
Okay, I see no hands raised, Mayor.
Okay, all right. So we'll go on, and we'll, we need to consider approval of a general plan amendment to change the land use designation from public facilities to industrial and zone mapping amendment to change the land use designation from public facilities to industrial and zone mapping amendment to change the land use zoning from public facilities to industrial of former city well site located at the corner of Mission Vineyard Road and Old San Juan Hollister Road, Assessor Parcel Number 002-550-007.
Were you able to hear that?
Yes, yes, we could hear that. I'll move that we do this, that we accept this motion.
Thank you, John.
I second it.
Thank you.
I second that, John.
Do you guys have resolution number, person, sorry? If you did.
One minute.
So the first one will be Resolution 202061. And the second one will be Resolution 202062.
Okay.
So roll call vote on the, on the first resolution. Councilmember De Vries?
Did you call me first?
Yes.
So Jackie says she has comments now?
You know, for ceremonial reasons only. I'm sorry, what was that?
Go ahead.
Was there a comment?
Yeah, Jackie had a comment.
I'm gonna say for ceremonial reasons.
So are we gonna take the public?
Go ahead, Don.
Are we gonna take the public comment?
Hold on, Dan, it looks like we have a public comment.
Oh, I'm sorry, all right.
No, that's okay. You didn't, I didn't know either. So do we have a comment?
Jackie has her hand raised.
Yes, but she's muted. She was unmuted, now she's muted.
Jackie, you're still muted.
How about now?
Okay.
There you go.
All right, when you asked for public comment, there's quite a few attendees tonight, which I think is wonderful. There's like over 30 people. So I tried to scroll down to find a little raise my hand, and you guys are fast, or I'm slow. Anyway, back to the issue with the Coke well. My comment or question is, what is the cost to the city, to us, the residents, with the final cost? I just want that on record. I'd like to know.
So the acquisition agreement, I believe, and David read it more recently than I have, had a $250,000 price in it. So we had to pay that cost, and then we had to pay the cost of taking an ag well and turning it into a commercial freshwater source. That included adding the filtration plant and substantial improvements to the site. And they're added near close to $750,000.
$750,000?
So that's our final, that's our final cost that we're voting on tonight?
No.
The city manager?
No, those costs were approved long ago, and the money was spent long ago. We're just finishing Well 6 in the last few months, but...
The money was spent?
Jackie, in other words, that $750,000, Jackie, is a forest that has left the barn.
Okay, so the money tonight is just the current cost to revert the land back to industrial designation, correct?
Correct.
Right.
And that totally is, I'm sorry, what was the cost for that?
About $3,500 for the permit.
Thank you.
Sure, okay. Roll call.
Okay.
So we are voting on the first resolution approving a general plan, land use map amendment to reclassify the property land use designation from public facility to industrial for the property located at the corner of Mission Vineyard Road and Old San Juan Hollister Road, Assessor's Parcel Number 002-550-007. And I have Councilmember Freeman making that motion, and Councilmember Flores seconding the motion. And so now we have a roll call vote. Councilmember De Vries?
For ceremonial purposes only, I am going to know, expecting full well that this will go 4-1.
Councilmember Flores?
Yes.
Councilmember Freeman?
Yep.
Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
Mayor Edge?
Yes.
All members of the council being present, the motion as stated by the maker passes 4 to 1 with Councilmember De Vries voting no.
Thank you. So now we go on to action items, and...
So we have, there's a second resolution.
Oh.
That was just the first one.
Well, that was just the first. Thank you.
That's right, sorry.
So we have...
Need a motion for the second?
Yeah.
So we're looking for a motion to approve Resolution 202062, adopting an ordinance amending the city of San Juan Batista zoning map, rezoning the property located at the corner of Mission Vineyard Road and Old San Juan Hollister Road, APN Number 002-550-007, from public facilities to industrial.
So we need a motion to approve this.
I'll make a motion to change the land use zoning from public facilities to industrial of the former city well site located at the corner of Mission Vineyard Road and Old San Juan Road Hollister, APN 002-550-007.
Thank you. Now we need a second.
So, sir?
I second it.
Thank you.
Roll call vote, Councilmember De Vries?
For ceremonial purposes.
No.
Councilmember Flores?
Yes.
Councilmember Freeman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
Mayor Edge?
Yes.
All members of the council being present, the motion as stated by the maker passes 4 to 1 with Councilmember De Vries voting no.
So now we go on to action items, and we have 6, 8, the fiscal year 2020-2021 budget.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. We presented a draft budget to the city council October 20th at the last regular council meeting. Thank you for your patience in receiving that. There's a lot of moving targets this year with COVID and other things going on in our life, so I'm confident with this budget that we are balanced and more stable than we were back in June when we first considered this. We had a town hall meeting specifically about the budget, and we had a number of people in attendance. We had a good turnout and a good conversation. Since then, I've met with several council members independently to talk about questions and concerns on the budget, and I'm ready to answer those questions now. But we haven't made any significant changes to speak of since the October original presentation. So let me just review some of those points. These slides were from the November 5th town hall meeting. The general fund is really the focus, because when the virus hit and our businesses suffered from the shelter-in-place order, our sales tax began to fall rapidly. It was estimated in April it was going to fall as much as 90%. It stabilized at about 55%, 55% off the normal. So we have to make decisions that are hard and conservative tonight and adopt a budget that reflects an adjustment for that kind of decrease. But we have made those decisions. We made those decisions in April of this year, and we saved about 9%, 9.3% on our FY 1920 budget. And this budget recommends an additional 6.8% decrease. So we were at a general fund of 1.8 million, and it had grown over $170,000 in just one year to 1920, and that was great. And we were on an upward growth trend when I arrived. And ever since I got here, it's been decreasing. No. I'm sorry. I'm getting a little punchy. FY 1920, we show a decrease of $175,000. So that money we made two years ago, we have lost this year. Fortunately, we had a very strong general fund reserve, and we haven't had to rely on it very much because of the smart decisions the council made earlier this calendar year. But overall, it's about an 18.1% shift, or $344,000. We're back to FY 1819 status, which is fairly strong, but it's good to remain conservative as our sales tax remains a little bit unpredictable and uncertain. So we've reduced our full-time equivalent staff positions from 13.5 in 1920 to 12.5. No deputy city manager position, no associate planner or account clerk. This budget does not recommend any cost of living or salary increases. It attempts to balance itself without reductions to staff salary. So with that, the general fund expenditure budget is 6.8% lower than it was last year. The capital improvement program, we have enterprise funds that we can use that don't impact the general fund. So we've added some water and sewer immediate needs. We've added some small tools and equipment for our public works crew, a lot of it safety-related. We have no new street projects yet on the budget. We did finish our third street project recently, and when we balance the costs for the third street project, we'll come back. I noted earlier that the gas tax money was actually higher than budgeted. So we're doing well, and we'll promise to bring back some new street projects for you after the first of the year. And then we have our two compliance projects that we selected, the water compliance project and the sewer compliance project. Those projects are just now, we're identifying the costs and the funding sources for those. So those are not part of this budget. Will probably show up in next fiscal year's budget. This year, we implemented a new transparent budget platform that integrates our software, our financial software, with the budget's software. So we're glad to be linked together and integrated now, and the budget is available at this link on the website. And if you click on the website, you'll see a fast, a quick link to the budget. They're waiting for you when you get there, and you can peruse it at your own, at your own desire, and it expresses the budget in a lot of terrific ways with the graphs and charts and other things. So with that, there are some recommended organizational changes in the budget, and that was pretty much the focus of my report to the council. We had been, as a result of COVID, we had taken three part-time positions, and they had become full-time positions. Our lead library technician became our public information officer, and this budget recommends that it formalizes that change into a full-time position of community services coordinator. Our disaster service worker, community liaison, who's been putting in 40 hours a week helping businesses with the parklets and to reopen despite having to close their indoor businesses, providing outdoor businesses, that's recommended tonight to become the economic development coordinator position. Our code enforcement officer assumed the role of the emergency operations director and went from 20 to 40 hours in that regard. And he continues to coordinate public safety role in both police and fire, and help with investigations, and help with truck enforcement, abandoned vehicle enforcement, and other things, not becoming a code enforcement officer. So I provided a job description for a public safety manager, and this position in particular would oversee and be the direct report for the police contract services from the sheriff, the fire department contract services from Hollister Fire, and code enforcement, of course. And so rather than having three independent reports to the city manager, this would consolidate these into one. And so the job descriptions, like I said, are in the staff report, and I go into quite a bit of detail on each position, so I'm happy to answer questions in that regard. I just want to state now, before I move on, that it's clear in Rule 4 recruitment and Rule 6, method fulfilling vacancies of our personnel rules, that there is a selection process that requires that these positions be recruited for openly, publicly recruited for, and that that job announcement include the job title, rate of pay, and nature of the work to be performed and training required. So we will be conducting a fair and just recruitment for each position. Of course, any incumbents are welcome to apply. With that, I just want to reiterate, we've gone from 13.5 full-time equivalents to 12.5 full-time equivalents. The mayor had a question about the general fund contribution. Mayor, we had 9.18 positions budgeted from the general fund last year. This budget has 7.5 positions budgeted. Our actual expenses last year were only 507. The budget was over $600,000 in 1920 from the general fund. This budget recommends, like I said, it shows an increase of $586,000. So the net pay, no net pay increases and a 6.8% general fund savings. So with that, here's the org chart showing the public safety manager responsible for these three disciplines, and then reporting up to the city manager. In a conversation with Councilmember De Vries, it was discussed if we could consolidate other departments together like this. And I had suggested in the future that we would look at community development, city engineer, and the building official, and create another management, if not deputy city manager position, to oversee those disciplines and also help with the planning commission. That would be the next step if the budget were stable. So looking forward, we hope that our budget rebounds by the spring of 2021. That may be optimistic, having just moved back into the purple phase of things. Organizational changes include consolidating more departments, revisiting the deputy city manager position that we had a year ago, and to boost community development with new support. And obviously, I think everyone is aware of our need for serious technology upgrades. So those are things that I would look forward to bringing to the council in the event that our budget were to improve. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions or any other strategies that the council would like to consider moving forward with our budget for this fiscal year. Mayor?
Vice Mayor Jordan, do you have any questions or comments?
I have questions, and I apologize for not bringing these to you sooner.
And we have Wendy also to help me out, so.
Hey, Wendy.
Here. Thank you.
Sorry. You just said something that I had a question on. Oh, city's facilities, sorry. I'm all for the upgrades to the chambers and putting in air conditioning at the library, and eventually acoustics at the community hall. But in light of where we are right now with COVID, is that necessary to do now? Could we hold off on that?
That would make sense to me. But if we got those acoustics fixed before we rented it again, it would be nice to do it while it's empty. But yeah, I would see that as a low priority on the totem pole. I agree.
Okay. And I appreciate all of the reports that we got the other day. Workload indicators based on... Based on the permits that we have out, based on the three or four different sections that the sheriff's department sent, based on the reports submitted by Level 1 private security and the reports that were submitted from... and the reports on, that were submitted from code enforcement. workload indicators, to me, this is just to me, didn't, don't warrant a thirty hour week or position. And anybody else can chime in on that if they want. I just didn't see it. I think our monies would be better spent combining or having an assistant deputy manager or assistant city manager, I'm not sure what we're calling it, deputy assistant deputy manager, and have several of these entities reporting up to that position. Having a code enforcement at twenty hour a week at a lower salary and reporting up to assistant deputy city manager. I had a question on a number of service requests were received during the budget process last year. Only two were being considered this year. The feral cat and chicken programs have been moved to the law enforcement department. Law enforcement being code enforcement or law enforcement being San Juan County Sheriff's Department?
No, code enforcement.
Okay. And feral cats, is that not done by? Marina, I apologize. Eric, I apologize. I don't know what group you work for.
So, right.
Is it, does, do they not cover that program?
They do. And so that was previously funded under the general government department. It's an application for funds that we receive from nonprofits. In my experience, anything animal regulation is better suited at City Hall under the public safety because it often includes violent dogs and rabies and other things. And so the current incumbent in this position is also responding to barking dogs and other issues that are animal regulation related. So, yes.
Does code enforcement have the wherewithal for the feral cat program?
No, we rely on the same.
We're still going to keep that over to?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely, yeah.
And the chicken program?
Right, so.
What is the chicken, sorry?
We have, I call it Chicken Patrol. And that's just another duty that we're able to give to this position. And they spend time mostly in the evenings or at dawn trying to capture chickens and while they are roosting. It's much easier to get them while they are roosting. So we bought some special equipment for that, and we're able to respond. We have had complaints of health and other issues that are related to the chickens. And so we try and respond when we can to control the population.
So that's currently, that program is currently under code enforcement?
Right, well, yes.
Yeah, okay. Is that like herding cats? Sorry. A quick shout out to the San. What?
Hey Leslie, can I just make a comment really quickly?
Yeah, go ahead, Dan.
Cities in California are, how many cities in California, city councils are programming right now for chicken capturing? That's pretty awesome.
Herding cats and chasing chickens. That's what we do. That's what we do.
Every once in a while, you just have to think like, what if a stranger just moved into this city council? And you make their top, a budget for capturing chicken, awesome. I love it.
Just a shout out to the San Juan Committee again for your continued support and all that you do to promote our city. Super appreciate all of that. And I needed to make that comment because I had a question on on economic development. And are those not covered under? Is it redundant somewhat under what the San Juan Committee does? And a future for economic development?
Well, they may be on this call, and they can correct me if they were wrong, if I'm wrong. But I was told numerous times that the San Juan Committee promotes tourism in San Juan Batista. They sell advertisements to TV and that type of thing.
Okay.
That's different than business retention and business attraction. Business attraction is, hey, we have vacant places here in our marketplace. This is what the lease is. Can I introduce you to the landlord? Can I see if the lease and the rate suits you? Here's the zoning, here's what you can do in the site.
Okay.
So in welcoming new businesses, such as the barbecue restaurant that just opened and the barrel industrial business over by Vertigo's, that's where the economic development person welcomes them to the community, helps them find a place, helps them get suited. But also helps the landlord who may not be based here in town to promote their real estate and say, hey, we have vacant spaces available. So that's a different function in my mind. Also, retention, business retention is what the parklets have done. We've done our best to help businesses move onto the street. Right now, restaurants can't serve indoors, so it's all they have. So the whole parklet idea, the whole parklet program was an effort to retain businesses. And that's a physical project thing that I didn't believe that the San Juan Committee was doing. So if I'm not correct, then correct me.
Yeah, no, it was just a question.
Uh huh.
All right, that's all I have for the time being. I reserve the right to come back later.
So let's see, we'll go on to Councilman DeVries, do you have any questions or comments?
Yes, I do. I'm very excited. Don, can you put this slide back? Sorry, what?
Go ahead, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Don, can you put the slide back that discusses the three positions that are new, let's say? There's one for that. There you go. So that's what I like to have an open discussion. That's what I like to have the recommended organizational changes. That slide right there, I think, is deserving of a full unfettered discussion with this council and the community onboard thirty seven participants I see in my window on Zoom. So the lead librarian technician would become community services coordinator. The lead librarian technician, that's a position that the city already contains.
That is a part time position.
Disaster. That's right, that's right. But it has existed historically, right, Don?
Of course, yes. When I arrived, that's what the, yes.
Let's skip to number three, code enforcement officer. That also is a position that has existed historically, at least historically as defined by the last year or two.
Well, in the past, we paid.
Pre-COVID.
Well, in the past, we paid Forleaf, our private contractor, building official, to do, I think, I think we had twelve hours in code enforcement in twenty nineteen at about seventy five dollars an hour. So it was very minimal. And it was not a city position, it was an assignment to a contractor.
Sorry, Dan, we had twelve hours?
Yeah, it was only like twelve hours in the whole nineteen twenty fiscal year. Pardon me, eighteen nineteen. So the code enforcement officer was.
As a need and decision.
I didn't understand all that.
Go ahead, I'll finish with you.
You're kind of, you're kind of cutting out, Dan.
I, go ahead, Dan, go ahead. In October, in October, we brought a code enforcement officer onboard before COVID at twenty hours a week. So we had a job description for a code enforcement officer at that time.
Okay, and I think that's kind of the point I'm driving at. Number one and number three seem to predate COVID. Number two, it appears to me, is a new position that we are creating amidst COVID. And disaster service worker community liaison at the beginning of COVID made sense because that person then would coordinate with all of the Small Business Administration laws and CARES Act and everything else. But now to create a new position, we're still in the throes of the pandemic, to create a new position of economic development coordinator, I just have concerns about how consistent that is with our community being in the throes of this pandemic. With sales tax going down, TOT going down, everything going down, is now the right time to create an economic development coordinator position in our tiny town? I would submit that I suspect very few cities have of our size or even larger have a position, a funded position, full time called economic development coordinator. I think that's kind of the luxury. Would it be nice to have? Yeah, it'd be really nice to have. But I thought that the city was on a high range for, until we get through the pandemic. And I just question whether now is the right time to create a new position called economic development coordinator. I don't personally think that it is. I think that whatever benefits that, whatever personnel is filling that position could fulfill can be fulfilled by others, especially leaning heavily on our very excellent business community like Jill Pelton and everyone else. I just don't know if now is the right time in the midst of a pandemic to create a new position called economic development coordinator. And I would, and I would vote no on that.
Thank you, Dan. Is it, was that it? I guess so. He muted himself. Councilman Freeman, what would, what would you like to say? Do you have any input?
Yeah. Yes, I do. I'm afraid I agree with Dan on a lot of his points. I think we need to move or continue this item until January or February of twenty twenty one. At that time, we can maybe ascertain or import a deputy city manager planner in addition or in place of the economic development coordinator. In the past, economic development was run and handled excellently by the San Juan Committee. And we've always had an assistant planner for the past, ever since I've been here. We have Matthew Sutts, his wife, Elizabeth, Matt Liao, we had Matt Orbach. And you know, and those people were planners and they did a good job. It's a needed, it's a needed thing because businesses come and go and they need the help to locate and relocate and get their permits and plan for new developments. If not a big development, just onesie, twosie, or a small business going to build up in info. This is what we want. We want ample development. We need, we need the planner for that. So I really think we just need to delay this decision for several months.
Thank you, John. Councilman Flotis. Councilman Flot.
No comment.
No comment? Okay, thank you.
No comments.
Okay, thank you. Well, I just, I have, I only have one question. You mentioned that we had a deputy city manager a year ago?
We had the position approved a year ago.
Oh, a year ago, okay. I misunderstood you.
Right, the position was approved. But it wasn't approved at a, at a level that could recruit a deputy city manager.
Right, I do remember that.
That's, that was the decision the council supported back in October to bring the code enforcement officer, the retired deputy sheriff onboard for us.
And my comment, I have labored over this a lot. And I just, I tend to go to the, in the middle of this pandemic, I mean, we're back in the purple. So I cannot justify any, any, I would like to just keep all the positions the way they are.
At part time or at full time?
Just part time. Keep the, all the three, three different positions that you mentioned, one, two, and three. Just keep them the way they are. And, and the reason being is that we don't know what we're going into. You know, going in, back into the purple, we're going back there. And so I just, I can't justify putting out more, more income.
Mayor, I'm coughing. Please remove your mask. I'm sorry, I think you passed by the.
I'm sorry, yeah, that's okay. That's all right. I put it back on because I, I was coughing. But yeah, what I said is I'd like to just keep the positions the way they are. Just keep it.
So all three positions would go back to part time?
Just, just what they've been doing, just the same, same pay, same hours, same everything.
Okay.
Sorry, I have more questions.
Okay.
You said there were twelve hours for code enforcement in nineteen twenty. Were those hours spent on code enforcement?
Those are hours billed to us from Forleaf, and I'm happy to share the invoices with you.
No, 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 that's fine. So he spent a total of twelve hours doing code enforcement?
It was eighteen nineteen, I apologize. It was, it was the prior years before Rich got here. Obviously, obviously, when Rich arrived, he was, he was spending.
He did nineteen.
Twenty hours a week, right.
Oh, he did twenty hours a week?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I, I still go back to, to these reports. I don't see that, I don't see twenty hours a week being spent on, and this, this is going back for a whole year. There's seventy seven, seventy something incidences on, on this report for three hundred days. And I understand that the rest of the, I guess the rest of the hours are spent on all of the paperwork and the follow up.
Well, right. So when you see a violation, it's a three letter process. It goes into fines. So one case can be quite time consuming. I guess what I've tried to say in my staff report, and I'll just give you this as an example. Most recently, we installed security cameras at the windmill. And we made friends with the new postmaster. And the new postmaster is ready to open office hours again to a longer time. And we're working on a lease for the sheriff to have a storefront operations there. And our retired deputy sheriff coordinated all that for us and brought that project to us. That's not something a code enforcement officer does. Code enforcement officers, I guess they could work with the sheriff on abandoned vehicles. But that's something we've towed many vehicles since October of last year. We have pulled over truck drivers, we have called trucking companies. We've tried to enforce the truck traffic as well. In the past, and I shared with the council, how all of our utility lids are being stolen. And so the first thing the retired sheriff deputy did was call Captain Taylor and say, can you help me with this? And so they're working on a way of replacing the lids with a chemical that when people touch them, they'll be able to trace who touched it. So he has a good feeling who is doing this. But we're working on a way of investigating that and to provide the proof to stop it from happening. It continued yesterday and the day before and this weekend. So these are the types of investigations that a code enforcement officer wouldn't generally be involved with.
And, and so that brings me to my next question. Our code enforcement officer right now is a. Our code enforcement officer right now is a retired deputy sheriff, and are the things that he is performing, the duties that he is currently performing as a code enforcement officer, are they not the duties of a deputy sheriff or sheriff?
They're not the kinds of duties that are being provided by our current sheriff contract. And and I had written into the draft job description that the, that this person have a degree in criminology, law enforcement, fire science, or public administration. So it's a, it's a manager, it's a managerial job. Basic course credentials from the California Commission of Police Officer Standards Training, because that's the the kind of training that would help with these investigations and help coordinate with uh with the probation and uh and uh and other agencies that 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 we can use to to support our services. So this is a, and and as a recommendation to enhance our our public safety presence to begin to develop neighborhood watch programs again and community-oriented policing. But it's, but if that's too expensive right now, then then that's the way it is.
Uh-huh. Uh, sorry, I'm, I'm, I'm just trying to justify a position, and and that's what all these questions are.
Sure.
So if we, we currently have or or have pursued an office with the windmill for the sheriff's department, so they will have a a presence in town?
Yes.
And 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 we have secured that?
No, we have secured negotiations.
Yeah, copy that. Uh, okay, so if we, if we actually secure a location, sorry, my computer just passed out, um, if we secured that location, then we would have a deputy sheriff in town all day long to be doing that work?
No, and that's, that's the point I made to the windmill. We contract for, and I don't have the number off the top of my head, but we contract for so many hours a week from the sheriff's department, and we don't want that person sitting in an office, obviously. We want them in their car.
Absolutely.
And so, so I wanted to make sure that the windmill didn't expect exactly what you said, you know, forty hours of a sheriff's deputy's car out front.
But in town?
But in town. It's, it does not, and having an office in town does not impact their contract. And I, up until about four o'clock, Captain Taylor was gonna be at this meeting and decided he couldn't come, so I'm sorry he's not here to respond to those questions.
Nope, that's totally fine. Um, could, could some of the monies that are budgeted for a public safety manager go towards beefing up our sheriff's department presence?
Pay them more?
Yeah, it would have to be the contract negotiation.
Yeah, absolutely. I I understand that. Um, that's what we're doing right here for, for all intents and purposes. That's what we're doing now for for these three positions. I, we are desperately trying to get business, business. We are desperately trying to keep our businesses and try to run a city and maintain some semblance of order with a lot of free time on the hands of-
Juveniles.
Of certain individuals. And uh code enforcement or a public safety manager can only go so far, and I think that the sheriff's department being in town more often or more often during the day or um shift changes could, could get us a bigger bang for the buck. Keeping in mind that retired deputy sheriff is a retired deputy sheriff and not law enforcement who would have to call law enforcement to to do something. I'm trying to save the city money. I'm, I'm, we have no idea what's coming ahead, and to make full-time positions with uh salary ranges at seventy-three, um-
That's the salary range.
So they would start out at seventy-three and move up?
No, no, I've, I've got the prices, the the cost of the positions. Let me find them. I'll read them to you.
I have them. I have them right here, but go ahead. Read them for the-
Salary range is seventy-three. That's not the dollar per hour. The dollar per hour maximizes at fifty dollars and ninety-nine cents, so um, so the salary range that's in in your staff report, if you look at the number seventy-three-
I do. It goes from forty-one ninety-five to fifty-
There you go.
dollars and ninety-nine cents. I'm absolutely fully aware. I-
Okay, it's not seventy-three dollars. It's, 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 okay. Thank you, okay.
Yep, that's why I said salary range seventy-three, and I'm thrilled that you iterated what it actually was for our, our, for the public, for our community. But uh forty-one dollars an hour for code enforcement or a public safety manager, I don't know. I, I think we can, I, I personally would like to save some cash.
Uh, Madam Mayor and Leslie, may I offer a comment on what you're doing just there?
Go, go ahead.
So Leslie, Chris and I were on our way back when, gosh, this is probably four years ago, we were the, he and I were the subcommittee to meet with Sheriff, Captain Taylor about the city's contract, and it became very clear, very early, that the proposition was this. Listen, you guys have X amount of dollars to spend on our deputies in our sheriff's department in your town. How would you like to spend them? Would you like periodic patrol? Would you like, uh, you know, three days on, four days off? How would you like to allocate that money? Recognize anything that we can in no way afford twenty-four seven. In the same way that we can't afford our own police department, as much as I know we would all love to have our own police department, and I know Mary Edge feels that way too.
I know.
That's a, that's a very, very, very expensive position. Maybe someday we get back to having our own police department, but for the time being, we're relegated to paying for the sheriff's department about as much as we can afford.
Understood.
Here in that, and so, so then it becomes a matter of, if Chris and I could crack that nut or figure out a way, it could be better than it was already being done. So then it becomes a matter of continuity within this town, and I think that Level One has picked up a lot of slack in that regard as far as continuity. And then also as far as the day-to-day grind, of all the day-to-day grind, code enforcement, so-and-so's doing this and so-and-so's doing that, but we can avail ourselves on the sheriff's department almost every time we have something like that come up.
Agreed.
So I think, and I, and Leslie, I know you might be looking about this um as a sidebar. I think there is a need for a public safety manager, that role. I think there's a great need for that in this town to fill some gaps. I think, I think the right person in that position could fill all of those gaps, so I'm in favor of that. And I just weren't offering that by way of commentary as a response to what you just said, Leslie.
Thank you, Dan. I have a question also.
Go on.
On the, the report here, there was a, a current salary that should be range sixty-eight. What have they been, what have they been earning now?
Uh, the same exact amount. Uh, that was an anomaly. When I reviewed all of the positions we have and compared them to our previous salary schedule, I couldn't find that salary on the schedule.
Oh, okay.
So all I'm trying to do is, is assign that salary to a schedule so that when I complete the evaluation of that position in the next few weeks, we'll know how to make a merit increase or not and what that would be.
All right, okay.
So-
And it wasn't any increase?
No, no, it's not any increase.
All right, I just wanted to be clear on that.
The, the previous city manager felt sorry for her and gave her a two and a half percent just off the top of the, anyway, it was, it was not structured or organized. So I'm just trying to make sense of it.
Okay.
Thank you for asking.
Huh, all right. Okay, so did we get, uh, we need, we need public com-
There are public comments.
We need public comment now.
All right.
We have hands raised.
Okay, so can you uh call on them or?
Marie twenty-five has had her hand raised for a very long time, and then our, uh, Flores as well.
All right, go ahead, Fran.
Okay, thank you so much. Not a problem. Uh, I, I really appreciate the city council mentioning the San Juan Committee. I, I'm not gonna really comment on the, on the positions being posed, but I will comment on the San Juan Business Committee Association has done a lot for San Juan Batista. I've been here as a business almost four years, and I was approached by the San Juan Committee, and they're the ones that helped me understand how the city works, who the key players were. Uh, they got me involved, and with that, I was able to really make a difference to my community, and I'm really proud of, of, of what they do, and I really feel like a lot of times they get ignored and not acknowledged. Because of the San Juan Committee, we have a hospitality group, and as soon as the pandemic started, this hospitality group, which is all the restaurants and tasting rooms that were hugely impacted by the, the shutdown, we were on weekly Zoom meetings going through the guidance, figuring out how we're gonna survive, what we're gonna do, and that was all from the San Juan Committee. There was a lot of communication and information being emailed out by our committee as well. We do a lot with helping new businesses that come in, activate through the alcohol laws when they're getting their alcohol license, um, and just about, you know, how, how serving is done, and especially when the COVID restrictions came, we help each of the businesses figure out how to fill out their applications. And so there's a lot that the San Juan Business Committee does for all the businesses, and we just really wanted to make a point and bringing that up. We also created a website that has all of our, 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 you know, our theaters in there, our restaurants are there. You can click and you can go into each of the restaurants. We had a website like that. We worked with Chamber, who just created one this year, the San, San Bernardino website. We've had it for years, and that's all the San Juan Committee. And so I just wanted to really highlight that because I really feel like not a lot of people know about the San Juan Committee, and they were, they made a big difference this year with the businesses, so thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, Fran.
Hey Fran, is it, I'm not American, I ask Fran a question.
Yes, go ahead.
San Juan Committee. Hey Fran, is it the-
Yes.
Is it the San Juan Committee or the San Juan Business Association?
Yes, I know, I know our short name is San Juan Committee, but the full name is San Juan Batista Business Community Association.
It's a long name.
It's a long name, but yes, the short name is San Juan Committee.
Well, how about if we just shortened it to Business Association? How about that?
We can certainly talk, we can talk about that over coffee, Dan.
Okay, sounds good. Order a brewing twenty-five beer. I'll, I'll settle for that also.
Okay, absolutely.
All right, Business Association. All right, thank you.
All right, okay. So thank you, Fran. Um, who's next? Mrs. B.
Uh, we have Councilman Flores.
Uh, I had a question.
Okay.
Is there, is there some way that we can just table this issue and have a special meeting just to deal with this? Question.
Okay, um, I, I think that's a good idea.
Because I don't think it's gonna get rethought tonight, you know, and we have to take action on it because it's a matter of night.
Okay.
There we go.
All right, thank you.
Then we have Mrs. B. and then Jackie.
Okay, Mrs. B., go ahead.
All right, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
I can hear you. All right. I don't quite know what your map or your goal is for this, but I, I'm hearing about the San Juan Committee and I've been here for nearly twenty-three years. I'm not really familiar with a lot that the San, San Juan Committee does because I'm not really advised by them on what they're doing. But I can say without any equivocation that the liaison, the business liaison, has been a huge, I mean, a huge, made a huge difference in the way I see the city. I've been here nearly twenty-three years, and this is the first time that I've felt that someone has full involvement has care of whether my business is successful. We've had many, many firsts this year, firsts with COVID, but some of the positives that have come forward from having a liaison is having weekly meetings with our mayor, our city manager, and liaison, updating us on matters that impact our businesses. Also, researching ways to help us to succeed, looking for grants and loans, and having an open dialogue with the merchants regarding the matters that concern us. I, I really am impressed with the way the city manager and the liaison work together to keep our city as a viable, full and positive example in San Bernardino County. And as a merchant and as a resident of San Juan, I feel fortunate and blessed to have such leadership at this time. This ban, this ban goal has pushed us up to and beyond our limit. But by having the support of our mayor, our city manager, and our liaison encouraging us to remain focused on our goals, I feel reassured that together we can hold this way and all make it. And as I said, this is a first for me, having someone who listens and brings ideas to the table, has consistent communication, uh, working with the partners, helping us get over the hurdles, um, whatever title you want to put on the liaison, whether it's, she does economic development, she's brought people in, uh, that position needs to maintain because, like I said, without that, I haven't felt really connected, and now I do, and I appreciate that.
Thank you, Mrs. B. Okay, so who's next? Jackie? It looks like you're next.
We have Jackie, Jackie Cruz-Lopez.
Good evening, uh, councilmembers and Madam Mayor and staff. It seems like this topic now has gone into a lot of different tangents, and I'm speaking as a resident and representing hopefully some life views of other residents out there that maybe will see or have not attended. I think as a resident, I hear what our manager is doing. I think he's been doing a wonderful job. He's out there in the community. I was on the interviewing panel when Mr. Reynolds was one of the applicants. I'm glad that he's here, and he's, he's gonna be here for a bit. But I feel at this time, I agree with Councilman DeBries and Councilman Freeman, that we really need to table making these three positions full-time at this time because of the pandemic and because of the more economic situation. You know, we're in the purple tier again. I don't have to tell you all that. You all know that. So I think right now with monies being tight and us taking a hit like other cities, large and small, it'd be wise to put those decisions on hold, and I agree with Councilman Flores that this is a very, very detailed topic. I think as a public member, it would behoove me to engage the public, and this is the first time that it's been done, and I thank Councilman DeBries and City Manager Reynolds for working to get these job descriptions and the org chart online so that the residents themselves, you know, it's not just about their- you know, it's not just about Third Street and the businesses, you know, that bring to this town. We all live here, we've lived here for many years, some of us are new to the area, but we also have to focus on what residents need to know and what is important to us. And so it is our taxpayers' money that go into it and also our sales tax, we support our small businesses, which we all do, that we need to know the details, the power city is being function, is functioning and what's going on in City Hall and new positions being moved from part-time to full-time, I think warrants a closer look by the public. And I, I agree with, with everyone here that, you know, this is a hard time, you know, we wanna support all small businesses, but I really think we need to be a little frugal, you know, when we think about the public and one of my last statements that we do have differing views on how we should be enforcing codes and bringing policing or not policing, but with all the traffic violations and the contract with the sheriffs, I just feel that we need to also focus on what's good for the public safety and, and, you know, safety of the, of the residents because there's just a lot more traffic and I don't know how to solve all this speeding and cars parking on the wrong side of the street. I live on a short street that's now, you know, it's always been residential and business and I like to know when new businesses are coming into our resident. I like to know what's their next door and I don't feel that we've been privy to that and I guess that kinda ties in with maybe the business liaison to kinda find out, especially when there's a street that's shared with the, with the commercial and residential zoning, we need to know who's coming in next door. I think that's a good way to be a good neighbor and run the city properly because it does affect our neighborhood when we have to share the space with businesses, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now who's next?
We did have another hand up.
Yeah, we have another hand.
Helena.
We have Helena.
Okay, go ahead Helena.
I was trying to, I knew myself. I wanna say thank you, I appreciate you clearing out the comments today and I'm a business owner here in San Juan Batista and I just want to say thank you to the last person who did talk, she put a lot of that points and I wanted to say that I appreciate the things that Mrs. B said. This is the first time in all the years I've been in San Juan Batista, about fifteen-plus years, that I felt the real support of manager, the mayor, the assistant mayor and certain of the businesses at large and I, you know, yes, it is a big topic for, to decide on positions right now, however, I think it's important and valid for us to understand the importance of positions that are currently being done and to give kudos to people who are serving in those positions and the support system that has been put in play and the camaraderie that has been developed through the businesses because we haven't spent so much time together. I can't even remember when we, we've done a weekly meeting where we were accomplishing things and we're feeling safer in what we're doing and that we're being heard, not just from the business owners, but from the community and from the city council, including the mayor, the assistant mayor, the city manager and our liaison. I just think it's wonderful that we have the support through this time to get us through some tough times and we still have tough days to come. I just think, you know, if there's no decisions made, we just don't, we at least keep the positions that they currently do have so that we can continue with the support because without the business owners, without the community at large, we don't have a decision.
Thank you very much Helena. Anyone else? Okay.
So, so Mayor, I might just offer a suggestion. The resolution before you is first and foremost at least to adopt the budget and then the second heading is these three job descriptions and positions, that could be tabled with the direction of the positions returning back to their original part-time nature or, or full-time nature, but without a formal job description until such a time that, that we can come to an agreement on what that would look like. So we can bring the job descriptions back in closed session and open session, but I would just ask that hopefully we can adopt the budget tonight.
Can I ask one question on that?
Certainly.
That, the, um, if the, the project on like the community hall.
If we, if we held that over, we can approve the budget and, and you can decide what to do with the money.
Oh, sure.
Do it or not do, okay, perfect.
Yeah, that's what I'm just gonna ask also.
Yeah, no, I have, I have the, I have the direction.
Approve the budget only and then I would like to have a close, a special closed session on the positions.
And then we could have an open session following that.
Exactly, after that.
Sure, sure.
Okay.
If that's what the council would like to do, I'm just suggesting that we try and at least adopt the budget tonight.
Absolutely, phenomenal job, I'm thrilled that it's on.
On the dot gov or?
ClearGov?
ClearGov.
ClearGov, I've been all over it.
Oh, you have?
Yeah, well, thank you.
Good, good.
Yeah, thank you for that and I'm totally disappointed that we didn't get kudos for that, you didn't get kudos for that and who was it, Hollister or San Benito County?
County did, yeah.
Yeah, disappointing, so job well done, thank you very much.
We, we didn't wave our flag, that's all.
Yeah.
So, does the council or anyone have any other thoughts on this?
So, does anybody else have any other thoughts, Councilman De Vries?
I know, I, I agree that the issue I have named that's before the council, let the city is what positions the city needs in the era of a pandemic and how we want to fund those, whether there are positions that are necessary or unnecessary. The overall budget, I agree with both of you, the mayor and the vice mayor, that I thought it was great job that Wendy and everyone else participated. But the org chart and what positions the city has and whether we really, if we're development coordinator or not, or whether that's a luxury that we can do without, as Fran Fitzharris says, it's, it sounds like a lot of those types of functions can be handled by our business community and not by us, that city staff person. So I think those are the types of things we should designate, I agree with Councilman Flores, that it's probably deserving of a separate meeting, but that's in closed session, that's fine, but as to the overall budget, I think it looks great and I commend all of those who worked on it.
All right, good, thank you. Okay, Councilman Freeman, do you have any last comments?
I'm basically just following up with Dan, I agree, it's a really, it's budget, I think we're gonna be good with it. And I, I think on the closed session later would, would be the proper thing to do and we'll have an open session immediately following and I'd like to delay it until the poll. Make it, make it things.
Okay, thank you for your thoughts. Councilman Flores.
Talk about that, bring it up, please.
I'd like to make a motion.
Do you like?
Do you have any other questions?
Is this proper time to do it?
Um, I just have one, one last, oh shoot, I lost my thought, it left.
Uh, I, can I make a statement?
Yes.
Um, I, I'd like to not hold this over for very long and, and to, to get it moving and if we can do it in a special meeting, not next week.
I was thinking of.
That's, that's Thanksgiving week, the following week, the first week of December.
The following week.
We have a planning commission on Tuesday, we could have a special meeting on Thursday, a week from Thanksgiving.
A week from Thanksgiving, that would be?
The third.
That would be the third.
Not the first?
There's, is a planning commission.
They do it on the first week?
First Tuesday.
I thought they did it on the second, okay, so I'm, I'm good with the third.
What about Monday, the thirtieth?
I'm good with the third.
The third, at what time?
Is, is everybody else good with the third?
Twelve o'clock.
I can't.
Sorry.
So, wanna do it at six on Thursday, the December third?
Five and six.
Okay, five and six?
Five for a special and six for the.
Okay.
Or five for the closed, six for the special. If the rest of the council, if the rest of the council is amenable to that.
How, how do you guys feel if we meet Thursday, December third, five in closed session, six for the public?
As Councilmember De Vries here, that's great for me.
Okay, good, perfect. How about you, Councilman Flores?
I'm fine.
Good.
I'm good.
Councilman Freeman?
Good to go.
All right, great, okay, so we're on.
So noted and I'll bring all the job descriptions and the whole classification plan together so you can see the whole, the whole picture.
Isn't that what you did?
Well, it doesn't include the maintenance staff.
Well, can we accept the budget as submitted without that?
Yeah, that's my point.
That's what we're gonna do.
The resolution has three requests and we simply don't adopt the third one.
Right.
Or four requests, yeah.
Hmm, sort of.
So we only do the, the budget, the, the one?
You can do one, two and four if you like and not adopt the job descriptions.
One, one and three.
But two is the job descriptions.
We're, we're gonna approve the, I'd like to make a motion to approve the budget as submitted and hold over the discussion for the three new job descriptions until December third in a special council meeting.
There you go, okay.
Do I have a second?
Like a second.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like a second.
Okay, thank you Dan.
So that would be Resolution sixty-three?
That's correct.
Yes. But it says salary schedule and new job descriptions.
We're not doing that.
But we're gonna leave that out.
Right, so delete number three.
And number two.
And number two.
Number two.
And if you want the house cleaning item on four deleted, I don't care really.
We don't have a four.
It's on the next page?
A four? It's not on here.
It's on the resolution, it's on the resolution.
I'm sorry.
Oh, Lord.
Hang on one second, sorry folks, my bad.
There are actually, well, the packet I saw, there's actually two copies in the same resolution, there's a five, it's a different size, same.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
But nonetheless, number four is on the top of the.
And we're in six A?
We're in six, uh.
Well, if you do not adopt the salary schedule, then you cannot adopt number four, so.
That's what I'm saying.
So we can.
You want me to redo this one?
If you, it's up to you, go ahead.
I make a motion to adopt fiscal year 2020-21 San Juan Batista municipal budget.
Just budget, okay.
As presented.
Well, you already had a motion on the floor or whatever.
Well, she.
No, we're revising it.
There was another part to it, so we had to revise it, so you can second it again.
Dan can second it again.
Or Dan can second it again, sorry Dan.
Well, you have to amend it, you know, you can't have two motions on the floor at the same time.
That's right.
Oh, Lord, okay, so.
So you just, please amend your motion, Councilmember.
I would.
You can rescind the previous motion.
I'd like to rescind my previous motion and amend the motion to adopt fiscal year 2020-21 San Juan Batista municipal budget.
Okay.
Item one of Resolution 2020-63.
Thank you. So now we need a second, right? Because it got amended.
Dan, you gonna second that?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, thank you Dan.
Yes, yes.
So let me just clarify, on this resolution, you're keeping one, but you're deleting two, three and four, right?
Yes.
So, so I have that you rescinded your first motion.
Correct.
And then you made a new motion, which is to adopt the San Juan Batista municipal budget for fiscal year 2020 with only item number one and items two, three and four on the resolution as presented, delete it.
Correct, thank you.
Right, so that motion was made by Councilmember Jordan and it was seconded by Councilmember De Vries from Calvo. Councilmember De Vries?
Yes.
Councilmember Flores?
Yes.
Councilmember Freeman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
Mayor Edge?
Yes.
All members of the council being present, the motion as stated by the maker passes unanimously.
Thank you, okay, so now we can go on to item six B, approved Resolution 2020.
Sixty-nine.
Approving, approving, applying for the, for and entering into agreements for a regional early action planning grant.
Thank you Mayor, members of the city council, this is a number, this is the final state housing grant available to the city right now. It falls in line after the SB two grant that the council approved a year ago and the local early action planning grant that was approved about six months ago. Both of these grants look to find ways to improve affordable housing policies in our city, the inclusionary housing ordinance will be updated, the, the accessory dwelling unit policies and, and ordinances will be updated and we're looking at a specific plan with the SB two grant of the Alameda Corridor and San Juan Hollister Road. So those are the, the two programs that we have in place now, this being the smallest of the three grants, twenty-six thousand dollars. It was recommended by staff that that grant be used to pay for the implementation of the other two grants and that is an eligible expense, all three grants would work together to further affordable housing in our city. And this is, this would be, this would help us offset the salary of project manager Marty Brown, who's managing these grants for us. And so this resolution is required to be received by the state before the end of November and that's why this matters coming before the council tonight. The application and materials are provided for you in the packet, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, so Councilman De Vries, do you have any questions?
I do not have any questions, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Freeman, do you have any questions or comments?
No, I just wanna move, move this.
Okay. Councilman Flores, do you have any questions or comments?
No comment, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Vice Mayor Jordan?
Nothing, thank you.
Okay, all right, so now we go on to.
Any public comment in the vote?
Public comment, thank you very much, I'm getting tired.
I know, it's only eight o'clock, it's only eight o'clock.
Okay, do we have public comment?
Well, let's find out. I do not see any hands raised, Mayor.
All right, good, so now we'll go on to approve this.
I make a motion to approve Resolution 2020-64, approving, applying for and entering into agreements for regional early action planning grant.
Okay, so we have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you.
I would like to enthusiastically third it.
What was that?
Dan wants to third the motion.
Oh, you wanna?
Enthusiastically third it.
Okay, thank you, all right. Okay, so the motion was made by who?
Leslie?
Oh, Leslie and then seconded by Freeman.
By Freeman. By Freeman.
Role call vote, Councilmember De Vries?
Yes, my, my third is lodged for the record.
Councilmember Flores?
Yes.
Councilmember Freeman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
Mayor Edge?
Yes.
All members of the council being present, the motion as stated by the maker passes unanimously.
Thank you. Okay, so now we go on to item six C. Adopt Resolution 2020-65, would that be 65? Approving, applying for, and entering into agreements for Prop 68 per capita grant funds.
Thank you, Mayor, um, members of the City Council. Rochelle, help me write this staff report, um, she's been helping a lot in our city, uh, working with parks and parks programs. As you may recall, she worked with the Luck Park Master Plan, she still works with that, and she's been helping with the design of the Franklin Park project, finally moving this forward. The prior city manager anticipated Proposition 68 from the state of California to provide a per capita amount of funding for San Juan Batista of $200,000 last fiscal year. It took the state until, uh, about three months ago to figure out how much we would be eligible for, and it's only 177,952. So it is required in order to receive these funds and put them to use, that the council adopt a resolution that, uh, authorizes the city to enter into an agreement with the State Parks Department, so we can move forward with these, with these funds. Now, the Franklin Park, as you may recall, has had money, uh, donated for its development and has a wealth of experienced and talented, uh, volunteers. So I'm optimistic that we can reduce, uh, uh, the cost of this park to well below 177, and then take the balance and put it towards future park, uh, capital improvements. And I'm focusing mostly on park improvements that may result from the Luck Park Master Plan. Um, we have sufficient funds to build the restrooms of Rudy Park. So with that, uh, that's our intention, uh, to follow through, the plans for Franklin Park are in the back of the agenda, and happy to answer any questions, and I believe Rochelle is still online, and she can answer any questions that the council may have as well.
If she has anything to add.
And, and Rochelle, if you have anything you would like to add, please feel free.
Okay, um, I was just gonna say that there's a typo, it's 177,000, and not the.
Oh, 150, oh, we just lost 800 bucks?
Yeah.
So. 177,000 even?
177,952.
Oh, yes, so my slide is wrong, yes, yes.
Oh, it is correct.
On the slide, it's 170, it's, it's 177, as it says in the staff report.
Oh, 172.
Sorry, thank you, thank you, Rochelle.
It is correct on the staff report.
Extra public $1,000.
Okay, there you go. Thanks to Rochelle, we got an extra $5,000.
Okay, all right.
I did, I did do a slideshow if you're interested.
Oh, I was unaware of that. You want me to share the screen?
Uh, sure.
Um.
Sorry.
Oh, you should be right in here, Rochelle, let's see.
That you can find.
There you are, there you are. There you go.
All right, um, so the, this is it, um, so Luck Park is one of the things that qualifies under this program, it has to be, um, items that aren't already allocated for, so the Veruti Park bathrooms don't qualify because we've already got general funds allocated to them. You could add to that, if we find out that it costs 65,000, then you could use $15,000 from the grant in order to pay for the additional amount of bed for it. But use it all on one location, uh, like Luck Park, um, where we've got, uh, the Luck Park Master Plan started. They're, uh, just about ready to do the online survey, uh, with questions on, from the, um, meeting, meeting that we had, uh, to find out what the residents want most. Or you could split it and put some money towards one of the programs and the rest to something like Franklin Circle, which currently looks like this, um, one of the residents created a landscaping plan, uh, with a bocce ball court along the, um, long side here, and then picnic area and grass. So they've just revised it a little bit after they had the, um, survey done, adding a, uh, ramp for access and, uh, changing it a little slightly from, uh, Jimmy's original plan. Uh, they also had a second option with the ramp on the other side, uh, up here would be Sixth Street along this long line, and this street here is Franklin Street, uh, so that'd be closer to the, uh, intersection, and then the bocce ball court on the long side. They've also provided different options for trees and benches and things like that, uh, for us to consider, we haven't gone anywhere with any of this yet. Um, we st-, uh, this is the, the first piece that we've gotten back from, uh, Janeki.
The architect, right.
Another option, which I, I'm sorry, I missed it on the budget, um, is there money already budgeted for the acoustic, uh, community center, Don?
I just carried money forward from prior years, and earlier tonight, it, it was requested that we, uh, withhold and, and delay that project until such a time when we are renting the community hall again.
Okay, so this money from Olga's would also qualify, because this is a public facility that's being used for recreation, we could use some of the grant money to, uh, do the.
To pay for the construction.
Because it's for public use and it's not already in our budget with federal fund money. So that would be an option, uh, as well, it doesn't just have to be outdoor space, it could be inside.
Well done.
So that's, uh, what I had to say there, and then there is another grant opportunity that I've been working on with Teresa Labanino and Don.
Uh huh.
Uh, I'll throw Olga's, but, um, that's a little bit harder because as you can see from here, um, we have more than three, uh, parks per thousand people, we're at 4.35, and our median income is almost $25,000 more than what they allow. So I'm, uh, trying to campaign them to consider the state park, uh, is, uh, around the Mission area to be an outdoor living history museum, not a park where you can play football or baseball or, or any of those things that we all prefer to do.
The museum's pretty cool.
Yes, it is, but it's, you know, not the same as, uh, striking somebody out or hitting a home run.
Absolutely, okay.
So that's all I have.
Okay, thank, thank you, Rochelle, that was very nice. So, um, Councilman Freeman, do you have any questions or comments? He was just there.
No, I do not.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Councilman Flotus, do you have any questions or comments?
No comments nor questions.
Good. Uh, Councilman De Vries? Couple of questions.
Yes, my comment is to say thank you to Rochelle, you're doing such a big job, Rochelle, we're very thankful for that.
Thank you, good. Uh, Vice Mayor Jordan?
Thanks for getting that 15 extra maybe for Veruti Park, uh, no, thank you very much, that was an excellent presentation, um, well done on, uh, trying to find extra, extra spaces for that, uh, for that grant money.
Do you have a hand raised?
Okay, public comment?
Uh, Scott Friel's? Scott, did you have something to say? Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm trying to. Sorry, I have an older iPad, I'm working on it. As far as, uh, Franklin Circle, I know we've talked to those folks a long time ago and, and we kinda promised them, um, some kind of cooperation. Matter of fact, I talked to the Farnie family, who is one of the original occupants of Franklin Circle, and, um, their mom used to go over and maintain a lot of those. So, let me back up, I grew up at 68 Washington Street and I played at Franklin Circle my, my, you know, most of my life, and there was, there were planet boxes, there were, uh, there was, uh, everything was, uh, how do I put it, there were trees, there were planet boxes and stuff like that, so Mrs. Farnie always took care of those, and, and she was a great person in our community because her husband was the superintendent of schools for us, Dr. Farnie. So I would love to see that project go all the way through, and, um, and when they start talking about the bocce ball court and the picnic areas, I don't know if, if anybody's played bocce, but it's so fun. So I just, I just wanted to, I just chime in on that, and then I would be totally happy with the community center getting some new acoustics in there. Not a lot of people know this, but my grandparents met in the community center, actually, my grandpa was more intu'd my grandmother's sister before he met my grandmo- before he met my grandmother, but um, that, that community center was huge in the Garrett clan and the Ger- the Clumber clan, so um, I would love to see money go to the Franklin Circle and the community center, and I'll leave it at that, thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Okay.
Madam Nick?
Yes.
Madam Nick, yes, got a question really quick?
Yes.
Scott, Scott, what would you think about calling that Franklin Circle part the Farnie part?
I think they are.
And that, that has been come up, that, that has been come up, and it was, um, the, um, Mary Farnie took care of that. Was it Gl- it was Glenny, it was Glenny Farnie, she took care of that, and they were such a great family, and it's, it's more dear to my heart to, to my grandfather developed that, um, that circle, and my uncle Alan lived there, and I don't know if, I'm sure Mary remembers my uncle Alan, but the guy was an amazing person, and I would just like to see that park come back to life.
I think, yeah, sure, I think it should come back to life, and I, and I think it's appropriate for the city to consider naming it Farnie Park in honor of that wonderful husband and wife who took care of it all those years when you were just a little kid.
No, I agree, I agree, we used to flee cake the can right there in that intersection.
Okay, okay.
All right, well, as far as I know, we, they are going to name it after the Farnie family.
So.
So we're gonna go on?
Other comments?
Do we need, uh, do we have any other public comments?
No, I don't see any.
Okay, so if there are no other public comments, we're gonna go on to adopt the resolution. I lost my place. Uh, 2020-60.
65?
60.
5.
65. Approving, applying for, and entering into, um, agreements for Prop 68 per capita grant funds. So I need a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2020-65.
I have, I need a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Sessa.
Role call vote, Councilmember De Vries?
Yes.
Councilmember Flores?
Yes, and I like your idea, Dan.
Councilmember Freeman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
Mayor Edge?
Yes.
All members of the council being pro- present, the motion as stated by the maker passes unanimously.
Okay, so now we go on to item six D. Approved Resolution, Resolution 2020-66, extending the term of the temporary parklets on Third Street 90 days until March 31st, 2021.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the City Council, when, uh, the City Council approved the Resolution 24, 40 resolutions ago, my goodness, um, in April. We approved, uh, developing the parklets on Third Street for six months, and that term expires, uh, December 31st. So with that in mind, uh, we've been asking the question of staff, of the city attorney and David Mack, our planning staff, what would it take, uh, to turn these parklets into a permanent, uh, uh, thing for our downtown? And, uh, there are definitely environmental impacts from, from this change that would need to be studied and documented, including probably a traffic study as far as turning movements and speeds and so forth. Um, there's also, uh, the adequacy of the current design guidelines, making sure that, that they are clearly defining both permanent and temporary, uh, changes to Third Street and making that distinction. Compliance with the health and safety of the designs, of course, which we've started to do last Tuesday with the help of the Community Liaison and access, accessibility of the parklets. The maintenance of the parklets is also important, uh, over time, when we get into a permanent situation, when they're not kept up, uh, in a, in a proper manner, or if they were damaged by vandals or graffiti or, or a vehicle, how are they maintained? And so, uh, I think one of the, the best tools we can consider it would be transition from an encroachment permit of a temporary status to a permanent lease or license agreement for the use of the city property, and so rather than permanent, that parklet would be good, uh, for as long as the term of the lease, and if the business should move on, it could transfer the lease to the new property owner, and that lease then could have conditions that would stipulate how it's to be maintained and how it's to be taken care of, so that we make sure that it's always compliant with our historic downtown. In presenting this to the Planning Commission on the 10th, last Tuesday, uh, there was a lot of pushback about the idea of a lease. I've talked to other business owners who are okay with the lease as long as the lease amount is, is fair. And so if we leased it for a dollar, we could still have these legal, uh, uh, conditions and transfer the liability to the business owners, but wouldn't burden them with a high dollar amount. Nonetheless, uh, I think most of the feedback we had at the Planning Commission was no lease. So that's something that we can decide, and, and the point of extending, uh, the parklets for another 90 days would give us time to evaluate that, and also with the recognition that there are, uh, people in the community who do not wanna see the parklets become permanent. So, uh, they would have a chance to voice their opinion, and we would have a chance, uh, City Council and Planning Commission Historic Resources Board to, to hear that voice and give us time to make the decision. So with that, we're forwarding a resolution from the Planning Commission to the City Council recommending the extension of parklets another 90 days until March 30th, 2021. And Mayor, that's all I've got on that one.
Good, thank you, thank you very much. So, Council, uh, Vice Mayor Jordan, you go first.
Is it until March 30th or March 31st?
I'm sorry, March 30th.
30th.
Yeah.
And not the 31st, okay.
Is there a 31th?
Oh, cause that's Tuesday, our meeting.
Right.
Or it could be a Tuesday meeting.
I, I put the 30th, that, if the council wants to extend it another day, that's, that's crazy.
Nope, I'm good.
So, Councilman Freeman, do you have any comments?
No, I'm fine with, you know, the lease, I, I kinda like that, and, uh, I just wanna make sure we, we cover any legal costs we might have.
Just an extension, yeah. Councilman Flotus, do you have any comments or questions?
I have a comment, uh, and a question.
Okay.
My question is, are we limited to that date, that we have to have it by March? I mean, I looked at the, uh, the, uh, COVID, you know, trends are going, and they're expecting a big old purge in, in July. You know, so, I mean, we're just gonna have to go back in March and extend it some more. Is there any way that we could make this, uh, depending on what the situation is, the COVID-19 situation?
That's a great question, Councilmember, if I can, if I can respond. One of my, uh, concerns, Council, is the status of the SEQA of the project because we haven't, uh, done a formal SEQA review of it, and, uh, if David is still on, maybe he can help us understand, or, or Deb, uh, our city attorney is on board, um, would we be at any risk of, uh, of stepping on the, the toes of the California Environmental Quality Act if we just perpetually extended this? When, when does a temporary project become permanent, I guess that's my question, uh, just by default? Is there, is there a threshold that we need to be concerned about as far as how much time? Uh, David or Deb, can you help us out?
So there isn't a legal threshold for that. I mean, it's, it's just when it's really permanent and when it's temporary. And I think in March 30, 2021, you could extend it again if you needed to, without really running a file of SEQA. It's just, you know, the day that you enter into leases and give people, you know, permanence there, I think is when the SEQA is gonna spring forward.
Okay. So, thank you, thank you, okay.
So that's your answer, Councilman Flores. Okay, so Councilman De Vries? Question, comment?
I am. Yes, a couple of comments. First, I'd like to, I'd like to remind the council that this does not force tonight to, for the decision of whether we make them permanent or not, just whether we draft this 90-day extension.
Right.
Right.
And I think that as we, as we move towards permanency or not, those are gonna be conversations. But as to right now, whether we do a extension, I think that's a no-brainer. These parklets have been wildly successful. I'm so proud of us as a city to come up with the design that we came up with when Mary and Leslie and Don and I, remember that, when we were out there?
Yeah.
With the tape measure and the fire engine?
Yeah, and the fire engine.
Three, four.
And Hollister copying us the way that they did just made me beauty with happiness.
Yeah.
Like, kid, they blocked off their whole street, which was a disaster with concrete barriers, and we did it differently. And ours was wild, has been wildly successful. All of the owners will tell you that, all of the parklet owners will tell you how much money they made on these things. So I'm very, very proud of our city for being a leader during the pandemic and coming up with this. And I think it's a no-brainer that we can extend these things 90 days with an eye towards permanency.
Yeah. Thank you, thank you, Dan. Vice Mayor Jordan, did I ask you?
Um, yep, I'm done.
You're done, okay. Do we have any public comment?
Forgot me.
Oh, I'm sorry. No, I did, uh, uh, I did not.
No, John.
I did not forget you.
You talked about leases and monies.
No, no.
Go ahead.
I won't fall off of Dan and agree. I think it's, they look really good. I've seen others in Wausauville and Hollister that not look as good. And I think they're working out well. Dan says they're working out great. Now believe them on that. And I, I, I think we need to renew it again and have an eye towards permanency if, if that's what the business people want, and if that's what the city wants.
Okay, thank you. All right, do I have any public comment?
See any hands up?
No, because you guys are all in agreement that you want us to keep up, so we have nothing to say on the business side. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, John.
You guys are amazing. You're amazing.
We'll, we'll call that an affirmation.
Okay, all right, so now we-
No, I'm gonna say thank you. I just, um, thank you, because this has been a long road, and our business community rocks.
It sure does. Thank you, okay. So now we need an approval?
I make a motion to approve Resolution 2020-66 of the City Council of the City of San Juan Batista approving the extension of the term of the temporary parklets on Third Street ninety days or until March 30th, 2021.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I'd proudly second your motion.
Thank you, I was hoping you would second it. Okay, roll call.
Roll call vote. Councilmember De Vries?
Yes.
Councilmember Flores?
Yes, and Arlene, I agree.
Councilmember Freeman?
You're muted. John, you're muted. Yes.
Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
Mayor Edge?
Yes.
All members of the council being present, the motion as stated by the maker passes unanimously.
Thank you, okay. Now we go on to item six E. Consider appointment of city treasurer.
Deb, go ahead.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor. As you know, you have a vacancy in the treasurer in the city by virtue of the fact that nobody ran for election, and your previous treasurer retired. So you are allowed to appoint the treasurer position. And mostly what you need to do tonight is just to set up a process for the appointment of a treasurer. Couple appointments I'd add, I think it'd be a good idea for the city manager to explain what the treasurer does, because I think it's become a fairly ceremonial position. And a person in town could take over the position actually for what, what it requires, the expertise it requires. It has to be somebody that is a resident of town, eighteen years old, and registered to vote. But I don't think there are any other qualifications that are required to actually take that position. The other thing I would say is that, you know, it kind of brings to light the fact that this position isn't, there aren't many requirements, and it has become ceremonial. And most of the cities over the past thirty or forty years, I'd say probably seventy, five, five percent of the cities have changed their treasurer positions to elect, I mean, appointed positions.
Right, right.
Because they can, they can hire someone, they don't have to be a city resident. So you should consider at some point changing the requirement that it be elected and have, have the city attorney come back prior to the election, and so that the city can permanently appoint the treasurer position. And so basically, I made some recommendations here, you can, for how to appoint the treasurer position, just advertise on the city website, ask for a biography, or some kind of resume, or statement of interest from the applicant. The application period closes on December 1, and then the city manager can review the applications and make a recommendation to the city council so that you can appoint at your next meeting. And with that, unless there's any questions, I conclude this staff report.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Yes, ma'am.
Go ahead.
Madam Mayor, I have a question for the attorney. Yeah, Dan, can you hear me? Yes. What would be the harm in us at the council now, I'm gonna be off this thing in a month, but what would be the harm in kicking this, this man down the road in order to entertain a re, a reorganization of the role of city treasurer in our city consistent with what you just suggested? Because what you just said seems to make a lot of sense to me. And can we, and, but it seems like it's gonna take a little bit of time in order to do that, to effectuate that change. Though if the city has great accountants and everything else already, are we really gonna be that out of pocket between now and whenever that change might be effectuated? Doesn't seem like we will.
So to change, sorry, to say, to change from elected to appointed, you need to bring it to a vote of the people. And that was done, I think, in 2006, I believe, or 2008, and it didn't pass without them. And the state law requires you to have a treasurer.
Right.
So you can't just not, so permission.
Right, it's a state law requirement.
And the, the law says that you have sixty days to fill the vacancy. So if we kick the can down the road to the next meeting or so, we-
There you go, that's what I recall.
We missed that sixty days, and then we have to call a special election, which would be, you know, quite expensive. So we should get at least filled in name, if anything.
Okay, so yeah, no, so that's not, the idea that I had wasn't terrible at all.
I know.
No.
I think it's good, you know, for someone that thinks they want to get into city government, you know, an eighteen-year-old or a twenty-year-old that would like to just see how things run, it would be a good opportunity to have something for them to put in their resume. So I think, you know, there'd be, you know, something nice to have a treasurer in the house.
I was treasurer once.
Holy smokes, you're the treasurer for a city? That's high one. Did you do it? Oh, I didn't.
Okay.
What a responsibility.
Okay. All right, guys.
Okay, okay, okay.
So we need to go on. Do we have any other comments? Councilman Flores?
No comment.
Okay, Councilman Freeman?
No, no, nothing now.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Jordan?
No, no comment.
Okay, all right. So now we go on to-
Is that an action item?
Yeah.
Oh, it, it is. So we, we need to, do, do we, do we not have a public comment?
Okay, seeing no hands raised? No hands raised?
All right, good.
No public comment?
All right, so do we have-
So I think the motion would be just to accept the recommendation.
All right, okay. But I, I thought we had somebody that had come forward.
The incumbent had come forward and, and offered to serve as the city treasurer.
Okay, so we need-
So the recommendation, Deb, would be to solicit for a letter of interest or statement of qualification to some interested parties and come back at the next council meeting with candidates?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so-
I make a motion to do that.
Yeah. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you.
Okay, great. Moving right along.
Okay, so now roll call vote.
Councilmember De Vries?
Yes.
Councilmember Flores?
Yes.
Councilmember Freeman?
Yep.
Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
Mayor Edge?
Yes.
All members of the council being present, the motion as stated by the maker passes unanimously.
Thank you, all right.
All right.
So now we're on to item seven, discussion items. And go, didn't, were you going to give the report?
Sure, sure, then these will be quick. I know it's late and we're all tired. The first report under item seven is an update for the City Council, for those council members who are not part of the ad hoc committee in particular, the three of you, on what the ad hoc committee is doing in regards to the sphere of influence and the urban growth boundary. And we've made great progress. Mayor Edge, Councilmember De Vries, Planning Commission Chair Freels, HRB Chairman Machain, and Ad-Large Member Jackie Morris Lopez. At the second meeting, they established this mission statement. The mission of this committee is to establish limits and boundaries for the growth that will serve and protect the City of San Juan Batista now and into the future. We met six times, including last night. The focus changed to sphere of influence. The City Council was aware. We changed Harrison Associates' proposal to just the sphere of influence. And Lafco has also presented and engaged, and, and the county and the new RMA director has been advised the status of our, of our interests. And that's important, because we're talking about property outside the incorporated boundaries of the city. So we need to have both Lafco and the county engaged. So with that, we did a little bit of history for the Planning Commission. We talked about the 1998 general plan, and these are a little bit hard to read, but I think it's fascinating, it was a good learning experience for me to read about the, protecting the charm of our small community. As Dan pointed out with the Planning Commission, this was the results of our most recent survey. So here it is in 1998, preserving our historic heritage and our small-town feel is so important. So maintaining the ag land around the city, the 1998 general plan had something called a planning area. And the, the, the ad hoc committee has been talking about this planning area, which is outside the urban growth boundary and outside the, the sphere of influence. So this is an example. The maps themselves are kind of screwy, because the urban growth boundary in green is actually shorter than the city limits. But the sphere of influence is this blue line, and that's where the city would have, would have some say in any projects that were proposed within the sphere of influence. And then the planning area is even larger than that, and I think the intention, Dan can correct me, or give him a chance to have a few words, of course. The planning area simply alerts the county that when you're even within this yellow boundary, you should be talking to the City of San Juan Batista about what happens in this area. And with that, this is what happened in our 2016 general plan. We adopted, the, the city adopted a general plan with a sphere of influence of fourteen hundred acres, would provide for as many as 4,900 residents in our community, which is an average forty-six new homes per year. You know, we did an extensive environmental document for this sphere of influence, but at some point, the policymakers in the city decided not to take this to Lafco. So we're still living with this sphere of influence, and this is the sphere of influence that the most recent annexations have been approved using, namely Copper Leaf and Rancho Vista. So we presented this map to our Urban Growth Sphere of Influence Committee. It shows all of the parcels along the perimeter of the city boundaries. And at that point, the city, the, the ad hoc committee determined, the mayor referred to it as homework. They took this map home, and they started drawing lines and determining for themselves where they wanted the sphere of influence to be, plus or minus, based on the history that I just shared with you. And we came up with this wonderful map, which is a compilation of, of our five committee members in various colors. And this being our southern border, San Juan Hollister Road here, and then going out into the industrial property, we talked about Coke and the wells over here in this corner. And then Rancho Vista up here on the northern edge, and this property here between the Rancho Vista development and Highway 156 is being maybe a good candidate. Because as David Mack pointed out to the ad hoc committee, that, that we're going to have to grow, that the state is going to require it, and we're gonna have our, our regional housing needs assessment handed to us based on projections of growth, and we're gonna have to try and meet those numbers. The current housing elements that we adopted last year only looked at forty-one units, which is a simple number for us to meet. But when it, if it gets to, if it gets to some of the numbers that the more recent projections have shown, it could be hard for us to meet those goals. And so that, that puts us in a pinch with the state of California housing community development. And what David pointed out is, if we don't grow out at least a little bit, then we're gonna have to grow up and taller in our, in our infill. And so what happens to our small-town feeling and our historic nature? So this is a summary of what we've been talking about, and this is some of what the ad hoc committee was talking about last night, to agree on this very same plan area and recommend that to the Planning Commission, and see if the Planning Commission will support that recommendation to the City Council. We talked about sending letters to stakeholders, to the purple properties on this map, who may or may not want to be in the sphere of influence. Some would like to be, and, and some may not, so we need to find out. So we need to get those letters drafted so that we can begin to hear from our stakeholders. And then we need to work closer with the county. So to that end, today, I had on my to-do list an email that I sent to the new RMA director explaining to him our process. And then I shared with the ad hoc committee a project that is on the, is on the southern border, right in this, that's Autoboni Ranch, and the Dassel property is right here, and they are looking at a subdivision that Todd Kennedy took to the Planning Commission in July 2nd, 2019. And that's a project is coming before the, the County Planning Commission tomorrow. And so we looked, I found an email trail with David Mack and I last July of maybe ten different exchanges of conditions that the city would like to see on this project, as they divide their thirty acres into five small lots for the Dassel family members, and then one large, the Hillside 25-acre lot. So that's all it is, is a subdivision intended for the Dassel family. And that project did come to us in plenty of time. We were able to provide comments, and the resulting report tomorrow does have the city's comments and conditions in it. And that's the way we need to work in the future. We need to have the time to look at a project and consider it. In this case, it was a, it was, our general plan requires that projects be connected to our sewer system whenever possible. So we have a condition that if we bring a sewer line down Mission Vinion Road, that they would have to connect their parcels to our sewer line. And that, that condition just runs in perpetuity with the land. So that's, that's the nature of, of that property, and I, and I shared that project with our ad hoc committee today so that they could understand it better. So with that, council member and, and mayor, if you want to chime in and, and help the council understand if I've missed anything or embellished anything that I've had to say, I'll yield to you.
No, you know, I, you've covered everything pretty much. I don't know if Dan wants to add anything to that. Dan, did you want to add anything?
Yeah, I think I would. John, can you put the slide back on on the chair screen? That shows the map that we came up with?
Yeah. Yeah.
There you go. Okay, so that the council and the other 25 participants or 20 participants members can understand, here's what we are as a committee. I wish my cursor, you can see it, but-
I'll help you out.
... describe it verbally. Up to the north at about 11 o'clock, you'll see a blue line going around those parcels. That was the opinion of one committee member, that that area should be included into our sphere of influence. And just so that we can all understand one another, sphere of influence equals providing sewer and water. Sphere of influence also therefore equals, in our general plan it says this verbatim, quote, "areas that the city wants to grow into by annexation." Though creating a sphere of influence does two things. Number one, it provides sewer and water to the area. Number two, it signals to developers that this area is suitable to be annexed into the city of San Juan Batista at some point in the future. Very soon future, too, by the way. It's in the spirit. And then all you have to do is go to Lafco, to Bill Nichols, and to Lafco committee and say, hey, this is in our sphere, we want to annex it. And Lafco board usually says yes. So this blue line up here at 11 o'clock, that was the feeling of one committee member. That feeling was not shared. Then when we get to the south, things get a little bit more interesting.
That went too far south. Sorry.
Oops, oops.
When we get to the south, going from about, I don't know, 8 o'clock, I guess, straight across, that orange line you see there, that was one committee member's idea. Other committee members thought maybe further south to incorporate all of the area that's initiated. And then another committee member wanted to not only do that, but then to go even further south to take in the cement plant. And again, the proposition is whether or not it's appropriate to provide sewer and water to all of that area and signal to developers that that is suitable for future annexation into the city of San Juan Batista. And what I'm talking about, just to get to the bottom of the line, is that, are we okay with that all becoming housing or not? Because that's the pressure from Silicon Valley, right? That's the pressure we're receiving from the north is housing. Anyone that's taken a drive through Hollister lately, 30 Road or South Side Road, you can see the thousands and thousands of units that are going up right now. It's an ocean of tract housing. And the question to San Juan Batista is, do we want to see that on the other side of the highway or not? If we do, then that darker line would be appropriate to provide sewer and water to that. If we want to stay something smaller than that, then the area might be more constrained, I would submit. But that's kind of where we are. We were not able, unfortunately, to reach a consensus at the committee level on that issue. I wish we could have, I wish we could present the city council and the planning commission with a consensus map, but these ideas, especially to the south, were divergent, such that it seemed to be prudent to just agree to disagree and have this go before the planning commission and stakeholders and others, as it is now. And that's the way that it is now. So from this point forward, city staff, David Mack, who I don't know if he's still on the phone call, hope David's still on the phone. Him and-
Yep.
Okay, David, awesome. So David Mack and others are going to provide notice to stakeholders, quote-unquote, as stakeholder, is anyone basically in this area that we're talking about? And allow them to comment on what we've come up with so far. And it will have some public meetings and some public discussions. And as I said last night, I will repeat it now, this is not the decision for a committee. This isn't even the decision for a planning commission or a city council. This is a decision that should be made by the public, by the community. Because this decision will answer very fundamental philosophical questions such as how big do San Juan Batista want to be? How much should we grow? Where should we grow? Those are really important questions, answers to which should only be provided by the electorate in a democratic way, in my opinion. That's where we are.
Good. Thank you very much.
And Jackie Morris, a committee member-
I think Jackie had a question.
I have questions, too.
Well, she's on the committee.
Well, she's on the committee.
Oh, she's on the committee.
I had a comment as one of the ad hoc committee members, just wanted to make a brief comment as I was representing the community at large. As I said, I tried to think about what my fellow community members might want, and I took a huge leap, but most people that I know that have grown up here like me and have stuck around, and people that have moved in and have stuck around, we like the idea of us remaining small and rural. And I like to call us a town or a village. And my whole objective being this member was, how can we preserve our natural beauty as a small village or town and remain historic and viable all at the same time? I, on the other hand, probably was one of the more conservative people withdrawing my map lines. And to let you know, I amended it because I extended too far south. And then I was told by another member and thought about it, you know, that's just a calling card for development. And I'm telling you that our community is being attacked. I'm going to use that word loosely, but I think it's pretty accurate, from all directions. We are a gold mine, we are a hotspot, we're commutable distance to Santa Cruz, you know, San Jose, Silicon Valley, south. We're a very, you know, affordable place in terms of people having to buy a condo for a mil, you know, 1.2 mil. I have friends that have told me that condos go that much up north. So my goal was to, how can we protect us? And so my lines are pretty much with the city proper, and I engage all of you, or implore all of you to be engaged, city residents, come to the meetings, state your opinion, state your concerns, because it's going to take all of us to really protect our city. And like Dan said, it's not up to a appointed committee or elected officials to make this decision. And I wholeheartedly disagree with the California mandate that we have to supply affordable housing. I think that one size does not fit all. I was in solving last week, middle of the week, and I walked around that town with my best friend, and we looked around, and it's like, there's not any building going on here. And certainly, our village or our town fits kind of a similar mold with that whole atmosphere. And I just don't understand how the higher-ups in California capital can mandate and fine us to force us to grow in a way that is not natural to us. And there's not space. So please come to the meetings, be engaged, state your opinion. You know, that's all I can say. Thank you.
Thank you, Jackie. Okay, so now we'll go on to questions and comments from councilmembers.
Scott Freels, is Scott Freels?
Yes, Scott Freels.
Oh, okay. Sorry, sorry, Scott.
No, I'm sorry. I'm also part of the committee, and I have to agree with Dan and Jackie. Originally, I kind of pushed my boundaries out on the south end down to Mission Vineyard Road. But starting to think about it and doing a little bit of research, I would love to follow the bottom half of that section on, do we got a cursor floating around, on San Juan Hollister Road?
Trying to.
And stop it there. I don't really want to take on a big chunk of rural property.
There it is.
I can tell you, as a property owner in Tuolumne County, getting homeowner's insurance has become a nightmare because we are in high-fire severity zones. And now, I don't want to take on those high-fire severity zones in San Juan. We have neighbors that live on Villa Padre that have been dropped from their insurance because they're saying they're in a high-fire severity zone. So I don't want to push the boundaries out too far for us because I don't want to be in the rural footprint. And that saying is, I'd like to preserve the north half. I think we have a good piece of property up on the north half of the property, northwest of the property, which is, I think, 52 on the map.
It's 55.
Which one is it?
55.
55, okay. I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah.
55. And that's a pretty good chunk of property to kind of, it's already set up for, for the most part, it's already set up for growth. It's a piece of flat land, and the best part is, even though you put two stories there, you can't see from 156 unless you really look for them. So that's my input on that. I'm afraid of getting too expanded into the canyon, but I don't have any problem with growing a little bit to our north off that Rancho Vista property. But thank you.
Thank you, Scott.
So Scott, can I ask a clarifying question, Mary? So Scott, when you say grow north of Rancho Vista, are you talking about that blue line that we see on the map?
No. No, he's not. He's talking about the area that-
No, 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 no. No, I'm talking about northwest to the left.
He's talking about that lot, that 55, the one that we said we could get a lot of houses on there for quite a while, not-
The big chunk of lowland.
Right.
They're going to have to move some, they're basically, that's a swampland, and they're going to have to work hard on that piece of property, but yeah, in that piece of property right there, not the Manning Ranch. I want to exclude the Manning Ranch.
Okay. So the area you're talking about, Scott, is that the line that we're looking at right now, right? It's purple?
Yes.
Well, I see red in, yeah.
It's red, it's red, Dan, and he's talking about that, where you see the cursor, see the cursor? That's what he's talking about.
No, we can't see a cursor out here in Cyberland, but I know what he's talking about.
All right, yeah.
It's, yeah.
Okay.
It's the-
We need to get, we need to go on. It's getting late.
Okay. Thank you.
So, thank you so much for your input. Thank you, Dan. So now we need to open it up to councilmembers, and so Vice Mayor Jordan.
Don, you were talking about an area just below 5 and something, that you said July 2, 2019, county planning commission, five small lots for-
Dassel property, right here on Mission Vineyards, right in here.
Okay, so that's only in-
That's in the county.
That's in the county.
Is that in one person's sphere, or are the blue lines surrounding that scribbled out?
The blue lines are scribbled out. They made a mistake and they wanted to, they wanted to go with the cement plant only. So those lines are scribbled out.
Right. So that property that you're referring to is in between the cement plant and Mission Vineyard Road.
Okay, so we could possibly annex them in, or we're in discussions with them currently?
No, no, it wasn't about annexation. It was simply, they wanted to subdivide the parcels.
Oh, okay.
And so the county said, hey, that's inside the city's sphere of influence. And when I looked through the file today, I noticed that their cover sheet for reviews includes San Juan Batista, and so the planner sent it to us and we provided feedback. And we presented it to the planning commission, but that was more than a year ago. We provided feedback last July specifically.
Okay. So going back to the 1998 general plan, this, the planning area?
Right.
That encompasses a lot.
And that, okay, so the intention there, councilmember, Vice Mayor, is to just give the county an alert, that we'd like to, that we're very sensitive about properties in this area. So it's bigger than the sphere of influence, and so actually, the committee recommended that we enter into an MOU with the county that talks about planning areas, sphere of influence, and keeping the city well-advised as to new projects coming that might be even as close as a planning area.
Right.
Oh, okay.
That's exactly right.
Okay, so they can't just come in and say-
Exactly.
-that's not in your sphere of influence, so we get to have it, so-
But we have some say.
Okay.
So, yeah. Ultimately, the county has discretion, but-
Yeah, they do. They have discretion, but at least they can come to us and say, look, we're going to be putting this, whatever, and-
Make sure we can hear you.
Okay.
Leslie, the best that we can hope for there, if a project is proposed in that yellow line that is on the screen now, is that the county should, quote-unquote, "great deference" to us, what we have to say.
I love that.
Conditions of approval, or their improvement requests, or whatever they may be. But those, all those things that we would require as to constitute great deference would be spelled out in MOU between us and the county.
Okay. Thank you. And then, is 49, 34, 36, 33, 26? Oh, sorry.
That's okay.
Yep. Yep. On the, right over here?
Oh, yeah, they're not in.
No.
They're not in at all.
That wasn't included by-
That's not a yellow line?
No, they're not.
Chairman Freels outlined that, and then last night agreed that he could let go of that parcel, the yellow line there.
So you're allowing takebacks?
We're allowing takebacks.
Oh, yes. Awesome. I like that. I like the takeback. Yeah, and I'm not a fan of 40, the upper one, that upper blue block.
Yeah.
Well done. Wow. Good golly, I can't believe that all of y'all got to this point. Amazing. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thanks.
Wow.
Okay, so Councilman Freeman, do you have a comment? Question?
I'd just like to thank the committee for working hard. I like the general idea. I don't want to grow any big residential projects or anything in either the south or the north. I think we're about at the right size. I would take issue with some very small things. I would make the properties south of 156 and south of San Juan Hollister Road commercial or industrial, develop our tax base a little bit, and also, zoning would keep residential away.
Yeah, good. Thank you. All right. Councilman Flores, do you have any questions, comments?
No, no comment, but I agree with Councilman Freeman.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
And, sorry, one more thing. If we, Jackie, just to, and to everyone, a word of caution, if we don't grow out, we have to grow up.
Yeah.
So keeping us super tight to the city limits could adversely, quickly, impact our community, our town, our city, our, I can't remember what else you called it.
Village.
Village, yeah. So, yeah, I would caution tightness, but be super conservative on our outer boundaries.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. So-
If I could, the other thing I would add, and it seems like the ad hoc committee and the public could get confused about this, well, mainly the public, but since Councilman Freeman mentioned it, he would not rezone property until after it was annexed. So the sphere of influence boundary, not the zoning. Those properties would still stay into the jurisdiction of the county until the city formally annexed them, and then we would have to apply zoning.
I agree that, yes.
Okay, all right.
Thanks for that clarification.
I just didn't want, I just didn't want the listening public to think that it was going to be of resounding interest.
Right, yeah. Okay. Thank you, David, for clarifying that.
And if I could bring one more point to the city council's attention, the two lots along the Alameda, 3 and 7, those two property owners are- those two property owners are very, very interested in being part of our city. One was recently bought by the Community Health Foundation, the larger parcel, number three, I think it is. And then, the Audubon Ranch has been working with the city for a long time. This is across the street from Copperleaf, lot seven and 13, I think that is, about being part of the city. So, I just, out of all the parcels outside the city limits, those are the two that are most ambitious right now about becoming a part of our city. So, I just wanted to share that with the city council. As we reach out to stakeholders, we're going to get different responses. And I just wanted you to be aware of those two interests.
And then, you know, if they are left out in the county, the county will probably develop the property anyway. And we may as well collect the taxes if we bring them in instead of the county giving the taxes.
Well-
But, that's, you know, probably not anything real big, but something-
This is our first real discussion, which is really great. As Dan suggested, we'll have many more.
Right. So, now, did I offer to public comment?
No, I didn't. We didn't go out to public.
So, did we have?
I do not see, oh, yes. Jackie has a question.
Hi, this is Jackie. One last comment. Now, I'm in public. I'm not part of the committee. So, I have extra time. So, my thought is that, you know, the state mandate, I'm going to sound like a broken record, but we have, you know, we have a unique situation here. We have a street, or maybe many streets or many buildings, if you can talk to the historic board, that are nationally, maybe statewide, I think, designated as historic. So, why can't we look into some, at some point? Because of one size fits all, I just feel like it just doesn't apply to us. I think, as John Freeman stated, you know, we're kind of in a nice size right now. Why can't we use our status, our historic status, to see if we can be exempt with the state? That's just my idea. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Jackie. Okay. So, there's somebody else with a hand up? Or no, that's still Jackie.
That's Jackie.
Okay. All right.
So, I can-
Okay. So, now we can go on to item 7B.
Right.
Update on COVID.
Right. You know, we put this on there just in case.
It's a sad day.
This is a comparison between yesterday and today. 3.1% in our county, 6.3% today, and 6.2 to 15.8. So, we're not immune. You can see that we are growing, unfortunately. Talk about slow growth. That's what we'd prefer in terms of COVID. I heard the governor say that the last two weeks in California, we've seen the most significant growth since inception. So, the last two weeks are startling to our state and to the rest of the country. And he moved many, 94% of our population is now in the purple zone. Again, the map is quite depressing to see. The county is also seeing increases. And sadly enough, 80% of our increases, 80.5 of our cases are Latino or Latinx. So, it's really hurting that population to an extreme. And so, we have moved back into the purple, which is widespread COVID. And this is a summary on the most recent press release that was sent out by the county. And each of these are hot buttons. So, I'm sure the San Juan Committee will share this with their business community and others. And it talks about the impact of being purple, basically restricting outdoor gatherings only in places of worship, in movie theaters, in restaurants, outdoor only. Retail is allowed to maintain 25% of their capacity indoors. So, I did see, in terms of enforcement, I did see a news flash in the Sacramento Bee, if the council is interested. I think Sacramento was looking at a fine for business owners who allowed their customers to be there without masks on. And I'm going to look further into that as soon as I have a chance. But, that's what I have to report on COVID. I think everyone is familiar with that. And if there are any questions, I can take to Public Health or others. I'm happy to.
So, Councilman, I mean, I'm tired.
I'm good.
Thank you. Councilman Freeman, do you have any comments?
No, that's an excellent report by City Manager Reynolds, and I appreciate it.
Councilman Flores?
No, no comment, no questions. Thank you very much for all the work you guys are doing. And you women, too.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you so much. Councilman De Vries?
No, nothing. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So, I don't have anything to say. All I can say, though, is that I've heard of friends of ours who have gotten sick, very sick. So, it's getting closer.
Sorry, Fran.
Okay. Jackie Morris, do you have a comment? Jackie?
Yeah, hi. Question. So, on the purple tier for San Juan Batista, I know that we have, our small businesses are open and now restricted to parklets. How does that affect the bars?
That's controlled by the ABC. And I don't know if Fran is still on. She's like our local expert on that.
Sure. I can answer that question for you, Jackie. So, we are, bars are restricted to outdoor only. And they are also required to provide a meal. So, they are allowed to be open as long as they're outside and provide a meal. So, for us in San Juan Batista, that's Daisy's, that's Bear's Hideaway, that's Eighteen Barrel, that's Ina Moss, and Berry 25.
Thank you.
And that's, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Comments?
It sounds like the governor may be trending towards curfews and even stricter restrictions. So, we'll keep you posted as the breaking news occurs.
Thank you.
Should have changed again.
Thank you for that update. Now, we go on to item 7C, water update.
So, we've been carrying this item on the agenda. It is an opportunity for me to share that we are making progress on different fronts in water. The administrative order on consent that the council approved in August, we met the fifth criteria. We met the November 15th deadline submitting a report, which was a schedule for design and funding of our selected projects. So, we're in compliance with the EPA. We initiated three funding applications, September 30th with the USDA. The Water Board is due December 31st. We're working on that application. And then, we'll be looking at the EPA in the spring. We had a good meeting with the USDA today focusing efforts on the wastewater project, talking about all the different details in our preliminary engineers' report. And we hope that that continues to move on a favorable basis. We have a meeting set up, a second meeting with the USDA on Thursday. When I left my office, it was going to be an early meeting on Thursday with them. We've initiated talks with the Assembly to Water District, our Water Committee. Leslie and John have received an agreement that Hollister and Sunny Slope have entered into with the Water District. They're proposing that we join that agreement and amend it and become a part of it. Talks about sharing some of the capital improvements that created the little, the, what's the water treatment plant? The West Valley?
The West Hills.
West Hills Water, I'm sorry. Yeah. The West Hills Water Treatment Plant, which is where we would source our water from. And we're having a meeting Thursday afternoon at the Water District with their Water Committee to talk about how that agreement would look for San Juan Batista. We've initiated talks with the City of Hollister. We've had about four meetings with them, but most recently with the city manager, Brent Miller. And Brent simply asked that we be patient while they seat their new council in December. But, to that end, he offered us to provide a presentation to his newly seated council before the end of the year so that we can begin talking about extending our wastewater system to Hollister. They're open to that. We've assured them that we would be sending only domestic wastewater, that we would conduct a study and a monitoring system and have that in place to reassure them that the water we're sending them will not upset their apple cart. However, it's pointed out to me that we are such a needle in the haystack at maybe less than 1% of the total volume that they process every day. Nonetheless, we want to be good partners and enter into agreements with Hollister. So, those, we're working on those relationships and we're making good progress. Last week, we started the transition between Carl Bajarki, who managed our water and wastewater master plans for us. He's now working on a rate study with Barter Wells. He's going to continue to do that. But, the city engineer has assumed a role in our process now. And she's actively working on an RFP to bring on a consultant team that will help us with our environmental review for the wastewater program easements and the design. And I asked her this afternoon, she was on the phone with her associate at CSG working on that RFP, if we could get a schedule soon for the USDA as well as for the city council. So, these, we're not standing still. And this is part of why I didn't have a city manager status report because this is about 50% of my day, right here on this one slide. So, if the council has any comments or recommendations, I'm happy to take note and listen and follow up as necessary. Mayor?
Vice Mayor Jordan, do you have anything?
I do not.
Councilmember Freeman, do you have any questions, comments?
Not right now, but I will shortly, my next, section eight.
Okay. Thank you. Councilman Flores?
No comment.
Thank you. Councilman De Vries?
No, thank you, Don, for your hard work.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
All right. So, thank you, Don. Thank you very much. Thank you to John and Leslie for being on that committee also. So, now we go on to comments.
Public comments?
Public comment on water? Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment?
I can see. I can stop sharing? If I can find my mouse?
I don't see any hands.
Thank you.
Okay, good.
Because I can't find my mouse.
So, we'll go on.
There it is.
Okay. So, we're on item eight. A, city council members. So, John Freeman, you had a comment?
Yes, I do. I've been asked by a couple of people in the community, and this is also a response to Councilman De Vries about water plans and the limitations of residential growth. And I have a couple of points to make about this situation. Safe, clean, drinkable water is of progressive value. I personally know several community action organizations that actually specialize in this subject. In the past seven years, San Juan Batista has had two and a half years under a State Department of Public Health drink order. That frankly is a horrible record. It is one of the worst in the states. I make no apologies for trying to do a huck of a lot better. I have always supported limiting residential growth in San Juan. I fought against residential growth in both planning meetings and on this council. I have suggested in the past year, a specific, kind of the south side, 156, to rezone that land into light industrial and commercial, to bring much needed revenue to our city while also cutting off, physically cutting off, potentially, broken that area. So, going on, the sewer plant needs to be rebuilt or the wastewater disposed to somewhere else, like Hollister. Our discharge stream has been outlined since the early 2000s. The State Water Board considers us a serial offender and the worst in the states. Our fine is presently at the minimum. And it is at their discretion. It could be injuries that we do not attempt to rectify our problems. And this could lead to severe problems, including bankruptcy. We'll try as hard as we can to stop that happening as it would be disastrous to the value to all of the city. I'm always open to any suggestions as to where to get better water or how to do it. And thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Flores, do you have anything to say?
No, I just want to thank everybody for all the work that they're doing. And another thing is, I don't like three hour meetings.
I know. I don't either. I'm sorry. Thank you. Councilman De Vries? Any final comment?
No, no comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Jordan? Okay. Thank you all. I just want to thank everybody for all their hard work. And I'm sorry this meeting was so long. City Manager, Don Reynolds?
Thank you, Mayor. One of the reasons the meeting was long is because we're trying to keep the next meeting as short as possible. The next meeting is hopefully a ceremonial meeting, not the special meeting, but the next regular meeting, where we get to seat our new council member, Freeman and Friel. And so, we wanted to leave the agenda as simple as possible for that December meeting. So, I thank you for your patience tonight as we got a bunch of routine stuff to you and just tried to get it out of the way and meet the deadlines. And to that end, I sent to the council our new policy that Deb Mall helped us create on appointing planning commissioners. And it involves an application process. And it involves appointing an ad hoc committee. So, it could easily extend into January as we filter through applications and come back with a recommendation. And so, to that end, I hope the council will think seriously and recruit some great candidates for planning commissioners and help us get through that as soon as possible because the planning commission is a critical element of our city and supports our ad hoc committee for our sphere of influence. So, all those pieces, we don't want to lose any momentum as we head forward into the new year. So, take a look at that and let us know if you have any questions. So.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
Okay. And our city-
May I just add on to that? I emailed you, I think, and Don Reynolds last night saying that I have officially applied to the city for a position as a San Juan Batista Plan Commissioner. And I look forward to your consideration of that application.
Thank you. Okay. City manager, oh, city manager, city attorney, Deb? Okay, thank you.
Good night, everybody.
Okay, good night. Thank you so much for hanging in there. Thank you, David. Thank you, everyone. Fran, Mrs. B, Jackie, good night. We're going to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.